Welcome, everybody, to the February 20th, 2018 Board of Commissioners meetings. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers if you'd like to pick one up. The first order of business is to call the meeting to order, and then second is to do a moment of silence with the pledge allegiance led by Mrs. Hancock.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the review and approval of the agenda.
Motion to, if we could, remove item number 12 and approve the rest of the agenda.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
No, I don't think that's my last.
This is George Kent. Can you turn the volume up?
You don't want it removed altogether, do you, Chairman?
No, just need to hold on, consent.
Consent, okay, so.
Oh, so.
Can you turn the volume up?
Make it, make it item.
We'll get to consent, we'll pull it.
Don't we have to move it somewhere onto consent?
No.
Question or decree?
No, just pull it for separate consideration.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, but Commissioner Faraby is asking if you can turn the volume up. I can hear him, but evidently you guys can't, and he can't hear you.
She's checking on that right now, Ron.
Okay, thanks.
So what's the motion if we're... What's the motion if we're gonna consider it on consent?
We just pull it from consent, and then he'll...
Okay, so approval of the agenda as written?
Second.
George, can you still hear us?
Can you, can you turn the volume up a bit?
They're up as high as they can go.
You guys have to talk directly into the mics today.
We'll do our best to talk directly into the mic.
Thank you.
Motion on the floor is to approve the agenda. Motion was made by Hancock, seconded by Buskrude. Any objections?
We're gonna pull number 12.
We're gonna do that on the consent. All in favor, indicate by saying aye, by roll call vote.
Buskrude?
Aye.
Faraby?
Yes.
Hancock?
Aye.
And Lacroix?
Aye.
Next, we have the consent agenda, recognize Holly.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Number five is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 6, 2018. Number six is a request to continue the abatement application for lighthouse partnership to the March 6, 2018 commission meeting. Number seven is to appoint Mr. Bert Jox representing Unit 1 and Mr. Dell Peterson representing Unit 2 to the County Weed and Pest Board, each for a term of three years. Number eight is approval of the Hawthorne Ditch Agreement, as submitted by the Highway Department. Number nine is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of January 2018, as submitted by Human Resources. Number 10 is to declare 526 Avea phones as surplus for the purpose of trade, as submitted by IT. Number 11 is to declare 27 retired Pennington County Sheriff's coats as presented as surplus for the purpose of donation. Number 12 is to declare the 2016 Ford Explorer Police Interceptor asset number 36628 as surplus property to be turned over to the insurance company due to an accident. Number 13 is to schedule a public hearing at 9:15 a.m. on March 6, 2018, for general fund budget supplement SP 18-005 for the Sheriff's Office budget for a replacement patrol vehicle due to an accident. Number 14 is approval of the resolution adopting the credit card usage policy and procedure for Pennington County, as submitted by the Treasurer.
Thank you, Holly. Is there anybody from the board that'd like to end the poll from the consent agenda? Commission?
Number 12.
Item 12.
Item 8. Excuse me.
Eight.
Making up the Hawthorne Ditch.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Move approval of the agenda, exception of 8, 12.
Hey, I'd like to pull a couple items.
Oh, thank you. Which ones, George?
Eight, 11, and 14.
Okay, so we got items 8, 11, 8, 11, 12, and 14 pulled from the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Looking for a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda minus 8, 11, 12, and 14.
So moved.
Moved by DeSanto.
Second.
Seconded by Buskrude. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote.
Buskrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Faraby?
Yes.
Hancock?
Aye.
Lacroix?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we come to item number 8. That was pulled from Mr. DeSanto.
Can you just speak up, Lloyd?
We're on item 8, well, item 8 right now, George, and Mark had requested that one to be pulled also, so I recognized him. And after he's done, I'll recognize you to speak.
Thank you.
Morning, Tom.
Morning.
I just would like to find out how much time we're gonna spend taking care of this, and if the...
He's gotta speak up.
I wanna find out if, how much time we're gonna spend taking care of the ditch, and whether or not this is enough money to take care of that.
Tom Wilson, Highway Department. This pro, this is an agreement that we have with them. They take care of the ditch, we don't.
Okay.
This is, that's why we pay them $4,000 to do it. This is as, as per the agreement for some construction we did, I wanna say 12, 15 years ago.
I see. Okay, thank you.
George, you have any questions for Tom on item 8?
I only heard part of what he had to say, but this has been going on, this is a ripoff that's been going on for 15, 20 years. The irrigators ought to be, if they're ditch, they ought to be cleaning it up. So I'll be voting no again, obviously.
Okay. Thank you, George. Any further discussion?
Move approval?
It's been moved and seconded for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. DeSanto.
Why aren't they taking care of it? Why are they contracting with us? Is that our problem?
When, when we did some construction work, and we put the ditch underground to get it out of our, to, under our road and carry it for about a block and a half, two blocks, this was one of the conditions that they put on us being able to do that.
And what amount of time do they spend cleaning up the ditch?
I couldn't tell you exactly how many hours they do. They clean the inlets on a couple of these inverted siphons, is what they do, and then when it gets, you know, they, they come out at least a couple times a week and do it.
They do?
Yes.
Even when we have no water running?
Well, when it's flowing, when it's flowing.
Okay, thank you.
Any motions for approval? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye, roll call vote.
Buskrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
No.
Faraby?
No.
Hancock?
Aye.
And Lacroix?
Aye.
Motion passes 3 to 2. Item number, item number 11, that was pulled from Mr. Faraby. Mr. Faraby, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Can you respond to item 11, please?
I don't remember whether it was last year or year before, went through the same song and dance. Who are those coats gonna be donated to?
If I remember right, it's in your packet.
It's not in my packet. Who's it gonna be donated to?
Just a second, we'll get him, Tom up here.
Morning, Kevin Tom, Painted County Sheriff. And I believe it does say in the letter that we'll donate them to other first responders, or if nobody else wants them, at the end of the day, we'll find a nonprofit or somebody to give them to. If nobody else wants them, I guess we'll throw them away.
Thank you, Mr. Tom. George, George, does that answer your question?
Obviously not. It, it just says, anybody that wants them, and here's my problem, as I stated a year or two ago. These jackets are still functional, then for somebody else, why are our people better than somebody else's people? Another county or another city, another whatever. If these jackets are still functional, then why are we upgrading? Shouldn't have to remind the folks in this county that we're 50 million in debt. I know this is just a couple bucks, but they all add up.
Okay.
Once again, if they're good enough for somebody else, they're good enough for our people. In this country, we're all equal.
Thanks, George. I, I do believe giving them to the first responders is keeping them in the county, or whoever first. Any further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve, number 11.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded by Buskrude. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye, by roll call vote.
Buskrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Yes.
Faraby?
No.
Hancock?
Aye.
Lacroix?
Aye.
Next, we come from item number 12, and I'll recognize Mr. Kevin Tom, Sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I ask that this be polled, because there's one piece of business we have to do to read into the minutes. This does not require an action, it just needs to be reflected in the minutes. I'll read that first, and I'll explain the other motions, but legislative audit requires that if we go buy a vehicle from somebody other than those that got the original state bid, another vendor can match it, then we just need to reflect it in the minutes. So just reflect in the minutes that McKee Ford matched the state bid price for a 2018 Ford Explorer Police Interceptor, state bid number 17148, for a total of $33,722. The balance will come from 2018 vehicle replacement budget. That just needs to be reflected in the minutes, which it is now, and then you'll still need to make the two motions that are listed in the letters in your packet, and you can do them in one motion if you want, both motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
So do we have to...
Motion 1 and 2. Motion 1 would be declared 2016 Ford Explorer Police Interceptor model VIN. It has it on their asset number 36628 as surplus property to be turned over to the insurance company. Be motion 1. Motion 2 would be scheduled hearing on March 6, 2018 supplemental for the 2018 Pennington County Sheriff's Office general fund budget in the amount of $25,6748 from unanticipated revenue to be used towards the purchase of a patrol replacement vehicle. And this was due to a vehicle accident.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve motions 1 and 2. Any discussion from the public? Any from the board? All in favor, indicate by saying aye, roll call vote.
Buskrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Faraby?
Aye.
Hancock?
Aye.
Lacroix?
Aye.
Next, we come to item number 14, the approval of resolution adopting the credit card usage policy and procedure for Pennington County from the Treasurer's Office. This was pulled from Mr. Faraby. Mr. Faraby?
I have a very, very hard time hearing you, folks. Can you hear me okay?
I can, we can all hear you fine.
Well, so, so I don't have to talk quite as loud, then. But I'd like for the rest of you to speak up.
We, we're doing the best we can.
Well, I pulled 14, 'cause I've got a number of questions, and obviously, we couldn't talk to the Treasurer yesterday, so I'd make a motion that we continue this item. I've got some serious questions about this resolution.
I'm gonna refer to Janet Sailor. She's here to answer any questions you have.
I think he made a motion.
Don't have enough time today to answer the, I'd like to sit down with her and go through the resolution.
Okay, I'll go with the rest of the board. Does the board have a motion or questions for Janet Sailor on item 14?
George made, George made a motion.
I didn't hear a motion. Oh, he'd like it continued, but there was, he didn't say I'm making a motion. George, are you making a motion?
I have a motion to continue it.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Faraby, seconded by DeSanto, to continue. Further discussion? Does any board member have any questions for Janet? Or questions on the item?
I guess I'm, I'm gonna ask, George, you, you can't ask the questions right now? Sorry, Chair.
No.
No, you're right. He says no. Janet, is it, are you okay with a continuance for two weeks?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, Janet's okay with it.
And the motion should read, until the next regular meeting of the Pennington County Board of Commissioners.
Because we do have that special meeting.
Correct, George, because of the special meeting. So it'll be continued to the next regular board, board meeting, and that was the motion and seconded by DeSanto. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye, roll call vote.
Buskrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Faraby?
Yes.
Hancock?
Aye.
And Lacroix?
Aye.
Okay, next, we come to items from the auditor, and I'll recognize Julie Pearson.
Julie Pearson, Pennington County Auditor. This is a transfer of alcohol beverage licenses from the Caputa Store to the TK Saloon and Grill. Applications as required by the state are attached, and fees have all been paid accordingly.
Move approval?
Second.
A move for approval by Hancock, seconded by DeSanto. Any discussion from the public? Any from the board? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Buskrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Faraby?
Yes.
Hancock?
Aye.
Lacroix?
Aye.
Next, we have public hearings. Next, we have public hearings, George.
The first is a public hearing to supplement the general fund John T. Vikrovich budget from restricted fund balance for $22,969.69. This is leftover 2017 money that we have to specifically spend by the Health and Human Services Director's Office, or return.
Move approval?
It's been moved by Hancock for approval. We gotta do each one of these, and seconded by Buskrude. Any discussion from the public? Any from the board? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye, and roll call vote.
Buskrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Faraby?
Yes.
Hancock?
Aye.
Lacroix?
Aye.
Next is item number 2.
This is a general fund supplement to the State's Attorney budget from State's Attorney non-budgeted revenue for $57,390 even. It is coming from overcollected revenues. This is a very specific program that the revenue needs to be spent on the juvenile diversion incentive program.
Thank you, Julie.
Move for approval.
Motion made by DeSanto for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Buskrude. Any discussion from the public? Seeing none, any from the board? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye, roll call vote.
Buskrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Faraby?
Yes.
Hancock?
Aye.
Lacroix?
Aye.
Next, we have item 3.
Item 3 is, is a MacArthur Fund's budget supplement to the State's Attorney and Sheriff Departments from restricted fund balance. As you're all aware, this is MacArthur Fund money. Because of the grant and the requirements, we've set it up into a special fund, and this will then go $212,500 to Sheriff and $212,500 to the State's Attorney's Office, and the bills will be submitted and, and audited through that.
Thank you, Julie. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Faraby?
Now, the, the accounting, the accounting is, is all gonna be separate from our regular, from our regular county business?
Mrs. Julie.
It is in its own separate fund to make auditing for the grant giver, if that's the word, for the people that gave us the money, so that we can easily keep it separated. This money has to be spent on whatever it was applied for, and we didn't want to keep it in general fund anymore, because we would've had to come forward for restricted reserve supplements because of carryover money from year to year. So it's still on our financials, but it's a special revenue fund.
Did you get that?
And then my second question is, will we still see the expenditures, or will those be, I hate to use the word, but I will, hidden from us?
Nope. They will not be hidden from you. Any check that we write, other than motor V refunds or tax refunds, have to be approved by the board.
Thank you.
Okay. George, just for some clarification, when you chime in to get recognized, please say "Mr. Chairman," so I know, I can keep track of who's next in line to speak.
May I comment?
Sure.
I'm having a hell of a time hearing you, folks, so I'm, I'm hoping I'm not speaking too loud and deafening you, but very, very awkward to run a meeting this way, isn't it? Thank you.
Okay, next, Julie.
Next is...
Oh, sorry, did we vote on that?
No.
No, sorry. Any further discussion?
Move for approval.
It's moved for, by DeSanto.
Second.
Seconded by Hancock for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by aye, roll call vote.
Buskrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Faraby?
Yes.
Hancock?
Aye.
And Lacroix?
Aye.
Now, we're at item 4, thank you.
Next is the budget supplement to the accumulated building fund for the James Kerstad Event Center budget. It's from current year revenues. I'll remind the board that this is in addition to the James Kerstad, I believe it's for stalling and a few other things, that is being paid 100% by outside, by Central State's Fair to Foundation and LLC, as well as some money from the city and donations will be coming in as needed. This is a non-county-supported expansion to a building that sits on our, on our property, and because that is, was bonded at the time the project was started, all of that has to run through the board and through the county books.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Any discussion from the board?
Move for approval.
Moved by DeSanto for approval. Seconded by Ms. Hancock. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye, and roll call vote.
Buskrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Faraby?
Yes.
Hancock?
Aye.
And Lacroix?
Aye.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you.
Next, we have items from Equalization. We'll recognize Shannon.
Good morning, Shannon Ripberger, Director of Equalization. You have several abatements in front of you this morning. A couple of them come from the City of Rapid City, and then several from Box Elder. All abatement requests have to go to the city if the property's located within city limits, so that's why we get them from Rapid City and Box Elder. Number 1 is the, the two requests from Rapid City. There's, there's two, two abatement requests there, one for a problem with elderly assessment freeze. There was a clerical error in the Treasurer's Office, and this abatement will fix that. Then the other property was just a property that was purchased by the City of Rapid City and becomes exempt. Then the ones from Box Elder, more of that stuff, the City of Box Elder purchased some property, Ellsworth Development Authority purchased some property, all of that becomes exempt when they own it. And then there's what I think is the last one, where we had a problem with our tax software and the multiple deed transfers. I think that's the, we, we've done that before, and I think this is the last one of those.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. You need a motion on both those separately, 1 and 2?
I don't know why you would.
Okay.
Just, if I could, a question?
For discussion, we recognize Ms. Deb Hancock.
Thank you, Chairman. So, um, does it have the dates where these, like Rapid City and the different people purchase their property? And then we went back and abated them? And abated it?
We're, we're doing the abatement now, and I, I can look in my notes, but when, when the city purchases it, it becomes exempt from that point on.
Right.
Rounded to the month, so the abatement will be that part of the year that the city owned it.
Okay. And then you went back last year to the date that they became exempt?
Yes, yep. This is what, that's what the abatement is for, is that part of the year of last year that the city owned it.
Okay.
So if they own, if they purchased it in, in July, that's half of the year, then the abatement is for 50%, or whatever part of the year that they owned it.
Thank you, Shannon.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Chair. Mr. DeSanto.
Just for public's knowledge, it's at the bottom of the, of the abatement application, and it, Box Elder purchased the property in September of 2017. Ellsworth purchased their property in June of 2017.
Yeah, this one didn't say, it just says February 5th. Sorry. Look at the bottom.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would look for a motion to approve both items 1 and 2 and items from Equalization for abatement.
Approval?
Moved by Hancock.
Second.
Seconded by DeSanto. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye, and roll call vote.
Buskrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Faraby?
Yes.
Hancock?
Aye.
Lacroix?
Aye.
Thank you, Chairman. Next, we come to items from the Highway Department. I'll recognize Mr. Tom.
Morning, Tom Wilson, Highway Department, again. First item is authorization to purchase 3, 3/4 ton pickups off the state bid. We're requesting authorization to purchase these from Lam Motor Company off the state bid. We did add the diesel, I thank you. That is, makes total sense to us. The cost for these is $41,236 each, for a total of $123,708. We have 3 pickups which we will rotate out, which I talked about last week, it's in the packet. Costs of these pickups are covered in our 2018 budget. Motion is requested to authorize the Highway Department to purchase 3 3/4 ton crew cab Motion is requested to authorize the Highway Department to purchase the three, three-quarter ton crew cab, four-by-four pickups off the state bid contract number one-seven-one-four-eight from Lam Motor Company at a cost of forty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars per vehicle. And we are also requesting a further move to authorize payment upon delivery so that we can avoid any extra service charges. This is the way the state buys their vehicles. They pay on the delivery.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. DeSanto?
Just so, uh, the public knows what we're doing here. Tom, could you explain why we came to the conclusion that the diesels were...
I'm asking Tom to explain why we came to the conclusion that the diesels were better, a better option than the gas. Well, the extra mileage we get from the diesel, even with the extra cost of diesel, comes out to a savings that overshare, that covers, is about a fourteen, you said fourteen thousand last week. I figured a little over thirteen. And since this is only ten thousand, it's still in the life of the vehicle, we're looking at a savings of three thousand plus.
And Mr. Wilson, did you find that, that, talking to your mechanics, do the diesels outlast the gas as well?
They outlast and they have a lower end towing, like, they're better for towing. So this is definitely a, a win-win for us.
Very good.
We have a motion for approval and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye and roll call vote.
Buscrew?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Yes.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Hattcock?
Aye. LaCroy?
Aye. And just to clarify in that motion, payment on delivery?
Yep.
Okay. Item B.
Next item, award recommendations of two thousand eighteen annual supplies. Our recommendation, we've had our letting on February eighth. The following items is where we read as low bidders. For aggregate materials at Rapid City area, three bids were received. We recommend awarding to Pete Lean and Sons and to Western Construction depending upon location of the projects. Asphalt concrete composite, three bids were received. We are recommending awarding to asphalt concrete composite to Simon Contractors of South Dakota. Asphalt maintenance materials, three bids were received. We're recommending awarding to Western Construction, Inc. of Rapid City, South Dakota. Precast concrete pipe and bridge products, we only received one bid. We are recommending awarding to Forterra Construction Projects. Cutback and emulsified asphalt, only one bid received. We went, we wish to award it to Simon Contractors of South Dakota.
Tom, can you just a little bit back from the mic, please?
Sorry. De-icing sand, two bids were received. We are recommending awarding to Pete Lean and Sons, Inc. of Rapid City. Fencing, only one bid received. We recommend awarding to M&amp;M Fencing, Rapid City. Guard rail, only one bid was received. We recommend awarding to Hilton Construction of Rapid City. Magnesium chloride solution, only one bid received. We recommend awarding to ZNS Dust Control, Rapid City. Seeding, fertilizing, mulching, and erosion control bucket. Excuse me. Two bids were received. We recommend, uh, awarding to M&amp;M Fencing of Rapid City. Timber bridge materials, only one bid received. We recommend awarding to Wheeler Lumber LLC of Whitewood. Traffic control materials, only one bid was received. We recommend awarding to Newman, Newman Signs of Jamestown, North Dakota. Recommending, recommendation for made on the basis of lowest bids complying with bid documents. Motion is requested to award the contracts for the items as noted.
Thank you, Tom. Any discussion from the public? Any from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. DeSanto?
Lot of these, we only received one bid. Is there a reason? Is that normal? Or do, do these people not, do the other companies not find out about it? Or what's...
There's a lot of these items that, there's only one company in the region that does this kind of work.
Okay.
As in magnesium chloride is a good example.
And we'd like to keep it in the region.
I, I would rather award to local people.
Absolutely. I get it.
Any further?
Approval?
Been moved?
Second.
Seconded for approval as items as noted. Any discussion? Hearing none, all indicate by saying aye, roll call vote.
Buscrew?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Yes.
Hattcock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye. Next, we come to item C.
Item C is annual construction projects bid award recommendations. We had a bid letting on February thirteenth. We reviewed the numbers and contract, contracts are recommended to be awarded as follows. ADA two thousand eighteen is ADA ramp upgrades Rapid Valley and New Underwood areas. Three bids were received. We recommend awarding...
Sorry. You're echoing in the hall. You're...
I'm sorry.
Back away a little bit, Tom.
A little more. Okay.
There you go.
Yeah. Just tell...
I'm sorry.
You don't have to yell. We can...
I apologize. We recommend awarding to True Form Construction of Blackhawk, the amount of eighty-five thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars. To the AST two thousand eighteen is asphalt surface treatment. We recommend awarding that, oh, sorry. Four bids were received. We recommend awarding to Simon Contractors of South Dakota, the amount of six-hundred-twenty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-one dollars and twenty-three cents. Asphalt surface crack sealing project, we received three bids. We recommend awarding it to Asphalt Surface Technologies Corp. of St. Claude, Minnesota, the amount of a hundred and forty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-two dollars. Two thousand eighteen micro-surfacing project, MS two, two thousand eighteen, two bids were received. We recommend awarding to Asphalt Surface Technologies Corp. of St. Claude, amount of three-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and thirty cents. We're requesting motion to award the contracts for the items as noted.
Motion to approve?
Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded to approve to lowest bidders and as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? George, did you say something?
Roll call.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye, roll call vote.
Mr. Chair?
I just asked you if you'd heard me. Would, yes, Mr. Farby?
Got a question or two?
Go ahead.
For the ramps, how many, how many ADE ramps are we going to get for eighty-five thousand?
Tom?
There are, you remember exactly?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine locations.
Locations. There are twenty-nine intersections. Some of those intersections have two or three ramps, four ramps in them. There are twenty-nine different locations.
Yeah. Can I answer your question, George?
Thank you. I got another question on the asphalt, the next item, asphalt surface. Where are we going to be doing the asphalt surface treatment?
Those are in different, different locations around the county. We tried to group them in the, it's, this one is west. I'll bring Mark up here to help clarify this. Mark Chalk, Pennington County Highway.
No, but closer, Mark, yeah.
George can't hear you always. Mark Chalk, Pennington County Highway. Uh, the, this year's asphalt surface treatment is about thirty-two miles. Mostly consists of Highway fourteen sixteen, which extends from Box Elder to Wixville. And a segment of Quinn Road, that's about nine miles, I believe. For a total of thirty-two miles, right, give or take.
Any further discussion? Yes, George?
It's fourteen sixteen and the Quinn area.
Yes.
And, and west of Rapid City?
It's east, east of Rapid. That is all east of Rapid City. Nothing west of Rapid City this year for the asphalt surface treatment.
Yeah, thank you. And then, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Micro-surfing projects, three-hundred-and-some thousand bucks. Where are we going to be doing that?
That is assorted roads in Rapid Valley, in the residential areas. This material stands up to turning traffic much better than a chip seal. So we are hoping that this will, well, I know it, it will hold up a lot better than a chip seal.
Any further?
None west of Rapid City?
That's east.
Once again, none west of Rapid City?
No. This is all east of Rapid City. It's all in Rapid Valley area.
Thank you.
Motion on the floors for approval. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye and roll call vote.
Buscrew?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Yes.
Hattcock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye. Next, we have item D.
Item D is authorization for letting of bridge deck repairs of three structures in Dark Canyon. We have three structures in dark, on Dark Canyon Road that are double T structures. The, several of the double Ts have deteriorated to the extent that the structures now have weight limits. Our intention is to close half of each structure and replace the insufficient double T units. Then we'll divert traffic onto the repaired half and replace the deteriorated units on the other half of the structure. One unit, we are replacing fourteen of twenty-one deck units. Another structure, we're replacing nine of the twenty-one. And on one of the structures, it is a complete deck replacement. Also, we re-jacket some piles as needed on these structures. These are, as will be noted on the plans. I'm requesting a motion to authorize the Highway Department to let bids for Project BR two thousand eighteen dash one bridge repairs of three structures in Dark Canyon Road.
Move approval?
Motion's been made for approval.
Second.
Seconded by DeSanto. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Buscrew?
Seems to me that we did this once before. I, I think I remember seeing pictures of how bad the bridges were out on Dark Canyon. And do you know anything about that, Tom? Did we not do anything at that time about them?
There have been no, there's been no work like this done on Dark Canyon. This was, the work that we've done was up on Thunderhead Falls Road.
Okay. Maybe I'm confusing the two of them. Thank you.
Can't hear him.
Chairman?
Mrs. Hattcock?
Number one, we forgot to say that our Highway Department on item C saved us, they were under budget, three-hundred thousand dollars. I appreciate that, Tom.
Speaking into the mic, Deb.
And if you can't hear me, George, you're in trouble. Anyway, um, so then, what was I going to say? Now you got me.
You know, you jumped me about speaking into the mic. Now it's your turn to speak into the mic.
Okay, okay. Let's move on with the meeting.
Mr. Farby, I talk loud, but if you can't hear me, I don't know what to say to you. But, um, I forgot. Motion to approve?
We have a motion in a second for approval. And this is on the west side of the city.
This is what, west of town in Dark Canyon.
I'm sorry. That's what I was going to say, Chairman.
Mr. Chair, yes?
Mr. Farby?
This is, uh, west, west Rapid. And, uh, I couldn't hear a thing that Buscrew was saying and almost nothing that Hattcock was saying. How about speaking into the mic?
They're, they're speaking into the mics loud that it's distorting us here in the meeting. So we'll do the best I can, we can. If we have to repeat ourselves, ask us when we need to do it and we'll do it.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. DeSanto?
I'll go ahead and repeat for George what Ron said. Ron thought that we had worked on those bridges in the past, but we had not. Tom corrected him and said that we'd worked on bridges at Thunderhead Falls. And, uh, I'm getting, I'm talking so loud, I'm getting little feedback, George. But then, um, Deb congratulated Tom for coming three-hundred thousand dollars under budget on these bridge repairs.
And the motion on the floors for approval. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all indicate by saying aye, roll call vote.
Buscrew?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Yes.
Hattcock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
The last item, authorization for letting of replacement of the wall highway division fuel dispensing system. In the past year and a half, we've been dealing with water in our diesel fuel tank at our wall facility. The problem with this is we've had to pump water out of the tank several times. And we also had damages done to the injectors of our four motor graders. That's actually how we found out we were getting water. And the repairs for that was thirty-two thousand dollars. Geometry of the current fuel system has its tanks directly under the pumps. To do any work on the tanks requires us to remove the pumps, the service ion, and all the concrete slab over the tanks. Fact that we drive over the tanks and, and that we drive over the tanks and that the emergency shut-off is a hundred and twenty feet, feet away from the pumps makes the system not meet current codes. The shut-off is to be between twenty-five and a hundred feet from the pumps. We are proposing to replace the system and move the system to get it up to code. This also would allow us to move the tanks outside of the traveled way. We would upgrade the fuel tank to an eight-thousand gallon tank so we'd be able to fill the tank from a full tanker of fuel. That would save us money in the long run. Current six-thousand gallon tank, we're not able to take a full tanker. We also would put in a satellite pump for fueling of our trucks which have dual tanks. This is a, this speeds up the fueling of the trucks tremendously. This is something that, when the original tanks were put in, we didn't have many dual tanks on trucks. Also, we can update the fuel monitor system to be compatible with the Rapid City system. I attached drawings to show the current tank configuration. Also attached are drawings showing approximately where we are proposing moving the fueling station so we can be in compliance with fire codes. Estimated cost for this project is two-hundred thousand dollars. I'm requesting a motion to authorize the Highway Department to let bids for replacing of the fueling station in the wall highway department facility.
Be my motion?
Motion was made.
To approve?
To approve. I'll second for discussion. I know we have some questions, Tom. First, I'll ask, George, first, I'm going to ask board members present if they have any questions. Then I'll go to the video and online. Mr. DeSanto, do you have any questions? Mr. DeSanto?
How long ago were those tanks put in, Tom, originally?
Those tanks were put in in nineteen ninety-four, twenty-four years ago.
Okay.
The drawings that I gave you that are, that looked blue, those are the as-built plans as they were submitted to the Highway Department.
Okay. And approximately, and I understand where you're coming from, but just for public notice, how much does it save us when we order a full tanker as opposed to a three-quarter tanker?
I don't have it at my disposal right here. But yes, it is a savings.
I've ordered fuel before for other companies I've worked for. And yes, that is, you pay a lot more if you bring in a...
You pay, you pay a lot less if you can get a full tanker.
Correct.
That much I know.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Mrs. Hattcock?
Thank you. Commissioner LaCroy. So, um, Tom, can you tell us how many times you have to pump that because of the water per year? About every, how many times?
We had to pump it about every three months to get the water... We had to pump it about every three months to get the water out.
And what was the savings, or the cost, I should say, not the savings?
The cost of that is seven, eight hundred dollars each pumping, and like I said, the repairs to our motor grater was thirty-two thousand dollars, I don't want to have that happen again by accident.
Thank you, and, Tom, if we could, um, the monitoring system for the public, could you tell them what that does for us, and why we need that?
The monitoring system is what we use to see how many gallons we pumped out, how many gallons we've put into the tank. What we would do is upgrade the system, the monitor system, so it's compatible with our new system that we have at the Rapid City shop. That way the, we can have a better, cleaner accounting of what gallons we're using at that location. It also helps us for knowing when to order the next tank of fuel.
And you're moving it also, can you tell us why you're moving it and why it has to be a certain amount between twenty-five and a hundred feet?
Code is that you're supposed to have your emergency shut-off for your tanks within a hundred, within a hundred but more than twenty-five feet from the pump station, so that if there's a fire or something at the pumps, you run over and hit the emergency shut-off.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
So, Tom, I talked to Mr. Farby last night, one of his questions was, this shop was rebuilt a few years back, or seven, eight years ago, why wasn't this included?
They had just, well, eight, say it was eight years ago, this would only have been sixteen years old, the fueling system at that time, so they would not have replaced it.
Okay. Mr. Farby, did you have any questions for Tom on this?
Uh, yes, and I, thank you for asking, I've got more questions, uh, and I make a motion to continue this item until the next meeting, next regular meeting.
We have a motion on the floor for approval, and in a second, you're making a motion to continue?
Substitute motion to continue, because I've got a, a number of questions I'd like to ask.
I'll second, there's no rush, is there, Tom?
It's waited a year and a half.
I'll second for continue to next regular meeting.
So, there was a motion by Farby, substitute motion by Farby to continue to our next regular scheduled meeting, and seconded by DeSanto, any further discussion? Ron, did you have any discussion?
Um, none that I, I can wait till next time.
Okay. Any from the public? Seeing none, all in favor to continue, not with the substitute motion, indicate by saying aye and roll call vote?
Buscud?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Yes.
Hattcock?
Aye.
Lacroix?
Aye.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much.
Next, we come to items from planning and zoning.
Ten thirty. Motion to break till ten thirty?
Because we're not going to be able to discuss the other one.
Motion's been made to take a break till ten thirty, made by Hattcock, seconded by DeSanto, discussion, hearing none, all indicate by saying aye, roll call vote.
Buscud?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Yes.
Hattcock?
Aye.
Lacroix?
Need a motion to come out of break?
Motion to come out of break?
We don't need that?
Second, I was told no, but we can do it.
All in favor indicate by saying aye, roll call.
Buscud?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Yes.
Hattcock?
Aye.
Lacroix?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, we have items from planning and zoning, I'll recognize PJ.
PJ, County Director of Planning Department, item A is Plan Unit Development sixteen oh three, Dan and Nancy Evangelisto, Center Homes Crafters LLC, Center Landing Holds LLC, and Summer Creek Inn LLC, to review a plan unit development to allow for a specialty resort development to include a variety of uses. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission and recommended for approval with forty-three conditions, staff would make recommendations to amend some of those conditions, it was before the Board some time ago, and I believe there were some motions made to remove some of the conditions, but, you know, inevitably just went back to the existing conditions for the PUD. We did receive an email this morning from the applicant's lawyer requesting a continuation of the hearing, and the applicants and their representative is, are here today. From my understanding, the reason they want a continuation is because the Planning Commission, when they made their recommendation for the PUD, asked for a review on March twenty-sixth of this year, which was going to be after the Board hears the review in this month, February twenty eighteen, which was primarily about the tent, but this thing has evolved past that. So, if I understand correctly, they're asking for a review after the Planning Commission again sees this PUD. And I'll get you the date.
I would move to continue to the second meeting in March is what they want then?
Uh, March twenty-sixth is the meeting for the Planning Commission, so the meeting for the Board will have to be in April, and so your choices for April are going to be the third or the seventeenth.
Move to continue to the third?
Second.
Do you have discussion, PJ?
Uh, just, there are representatives in the audience from the applicant's side, and also the, some of the neighbors, I don't know if they want, if you want to give them time to speak.
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second to continue to the April third discussion, do we have people that wanted to speak on this item? Please come forward. Please recognize, you know, give your name and...
Yes, good morning, Alan Smoot, I'm here on behalf of the Evangelistos, and I think PJ said it well, basically, we're asking that this Board continue this matter because on November thirteenth, the Planning Commission said, we want to get more information about this tent, to see whether it should be permanent permitting or temporary permitting, and they're wanting to know about how it's anchored, snow loads, wind load, how it deals with the more extreme winter months, and I think we're getting there, and so by, we've had a nice storm here to give it a test, so I think on the twenty-sixth of March, when they have their meeting, they will be better informed, that's what they are asking for, to, to make a better recommendation to this Board.
Okay, thank you. Is there some residents who wish to speak? I'll just repeat, please identify yourself for the, for the record.
Thank you, members of the Pennington County Commission, I'm Peggy Gibson, I'm from Huron, and we are the, my husband Dale and I are the owners of Lot P, which is across the road, Taylor Ranch Road, from the Bed and Breakfast Event Center, et cetera, et cetera, and I want to thank you for allowing me to be here, I have submitted a memo regarding some of the objections to the PUD. In addition to that memo, um, there is question about number thirty-five, which is on page one sixty-two of your, um, documents, and that basically says that lots three and four have a zero-foot setback on all interior lines, a fifteen-foot front and rear yard setback. I spoke to our surveyor, Renner and Associates, they were supposed to come out and find the stakes that we had surveyed on our south boundary line, however, weather interfered with that, and then, so I have questions about why there is a zero-foot setback on number, item number thirty-five, of course, the tent, and whether or not that is going to be temporary or permanent is a bone of contention for the neighborhood, also, a drainage plan, I don't see any comprehensive drainage plan, and why all of, there are forty variances and setbacks, changing land usage, and that was an objection by Gary and Deborah Briggs in your packet. Then on page one sixty-two, item number twenty-nine, Lot Seven, the campground, um, the water source for that campground seems to be the well located on Lot P. Number thirty-four, Lot Forty-five is permitted to have a specialty resort, once again, water is a question, because it seems that the Evangelistos perhaps are using water from Lot P, and there is a definite well agreement for non-commercial use of that well on Lot P. Dale and I currently have a lawsuit in place, so we can get some resolution about the use of that water on Lot P. The Evangelistos did apply to DENR in March of twenty sixteen to get a commercial permit, which goes directly against that well agreement, so we think their intent is to use water commercially on Lot P. So, those are our concerns, and of course, the temporary camp, campground, section three fourteen of your zoning regulations as well. So, the neighbors all have a myriad of concerns regarding the circus tent and its temporary or permanent use, and so, thank you for allowing me to speak today, and certainly appreciate your service as Commissioners.
Thank you, Peggy. And I'll remind everybody that this is a continued item, but I know this, people made special effort to get out and come in to speak on this today, so is there any more residents out there who'd like to speak on this item? Anybody from the Board? Hearing none, we do have a motion on the floor to continue this to the April third County Commission meeting, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye and a roll call vote.
Buscud?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Yes.
Hattcock?
Aye.
And Lacroix?
Aye. Thank you.
Next, we come to item B, that's the First Reading and Public Hearing of Ordinance Amendment oh eight seventeen dash zero two, Pendon County, to amend the section one oh three definitions in section two oh five dash B seventeen, General Agriculture District, section twelve, two twelve dash B twelve, Heavy Industrial District, and section five oh seven B, mining permits in section five eleven fees, and to add section three twenty to mining operations of the Pendon County zoning ordinance, continued from the February thirteenth, eighteen Board and Commission meetings. We are going to pick up where we left off, was where we were at, was on page four, if I remember right, four and five, do we still need a couple minutes to set this up? I'm sorry, I didn't, I jumped right into that. Holly, do we need a couple minutes?
Weren't we on five and six?
What's that?
Weren't we on five and six?
Yes.
Yes, okay, did I say four and five?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to pick up where we left off on items five and six, and what I'll do is I'll ask Michelle to come up and get some clarification on those, that ended with a two-to-two tie vote. They made some changes, discussed that, so what we're going to do, folks, is, like you said, we're going to pick up, we've taken seven hours, or not, if not more, on public comment so far, and now we're at the point where the Commission needs to do some work on this. We are going to allow open public comment at the very end, after the, you know, we have our discussions and there's a motion made and, and on the floor, so then I, then we'll take public comment, and we'd like you to limit it to at least three minutes per person as you come up. But I just wanted to stress how important it is for the Commission to start going through this and doing the work, we've had three or four Planning Commission meetings on this, and plus a year worth of meetings, so that's all I'm asking from, from the public, I know there's a lot of emotions and there's a lot of desire to speak on this, but please have patience with us as we work through this. As we're going to do this, as we explained before, we'll go page by page, and I'll ask for a motion if there's any changes from the Commission that they want to make, or is there something they want to discuss, and we'll kind of go through it page by page. Where we left off was four and five, because those two run together, and so if you've got your books, just follow through with us.
It's five and six.
Five and six.
Five and six, I keep saying, okay, sorry.
Okay.
That's okay.
So...
Mr. Chair, I just have one comment, Brittany Molliter, Environment and Planning Supervisor, there was a change on page two, that staff in the State's Attorney's Office were supposed to look at the language for that first part under that section, and we did make a proposal, those were based on Ms. Healding's comments at the end of the meeting, I believe, so...
And that's the ones that's highlighted on page two? And what was the change?
Because there was some question about that language and the grammar that was in that sentence, so we had proposed to change it into those two bullet points, so it was clear that it was sand and gravel and rock to be crushed or used in construction, semicolon ore, and then next bullet point, pegmatite materials, or, excuse me, pegmatite minerals, limestone, iron ore, sand, gypsum, or shale used to make cement or lime. So, that was our recommendation.
So, we'll start out on page two then?
Yes. Chairman, thank you.
Ms. Hattcock?
I'll make a motion to approve on section three twenty mining operation, the definition and the change.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the changes on page two of the language that's, that Brittany just stated, any further discussion? Any from the Board? All in favor indicate by saying aye, roll call vote.
Buscud?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Yes.
Hattcock?
Aye.
Lacroix?
Aye.
Next, that brings us back to page five.
Chairman, one more thing.
Ms. Hattcock?
If we could, sir, page three of twenty-two, let's add, if we could, excavation, the definition. That'd be my motion.
On page three?
Yes, sir.
Did Ron and George, page three, lower half, in the blue comments part, Ms. Hattcock is asking for explicit, explicit...
Description of excavation.
Yep, description of excavation, the process of moving earth, rock, other materials with machinery, or explosives, excavation activities including earthwork performed in purposes removal of aggregate deposits, but excluded exploratory activities, are, does everybody understand the motion? There was no second yet, but that's the motion.
Second for discussion.
Motion was made and seconded for discussion, further discussion, Ms. Hattcock, do you have anything, or do we need to ask?
Just, it would be after delay, would be excavation, and then fly rock, all it is, is a definition of excavation.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye and a roll call vote.
Buscud?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Yes.
Hattcock?
Aye.
And Lacroix?
Aye.
Next, is there any other changes on four, three or four? Seeing none, on five, we'll come back to number five, I recognize Michelle, she could give us some background on pages five and six, please.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office, there was a motion that was tabled as a result of a two-to-two vote at our last hearing. The subject matter that's being addressed by that vote has to do with the public hearing process as well as the appeal process. I would note that members of the concerned citizens have asked that the Board of Commissioners be the, the determining body with regard to any mining application. Ultimately, that's the decision for the Board, I would just like to point out that for practical purposes, the appeal process does accomplish the desired result by the concerned citizens with the proposed changes. The actual motion that was voted on changed the standing requirement for purposes of appeal, so the motion approved the Planning Commission as the initial body. So, the motion approved the planning commission as the initial body that would address the mining application with an appeal to the Board of Commissioners by any affected person. That change in standing would allow any concerned citizen who disagrees with the decision by the planning commission to appeal to the Board of Commissioners. So, in practicality, unless it's a mining application that where there is no disagreement or any controversy, the final decision would ultimately be made by the Board of Commissioners. The only other change, I believe, that was part of the body of the motion that was made at the last meeting, changed the timeframe for filing of appeal to 30 days. Staff is recommending 15. Again, explaining that the appeal process is very different. It's very informal with an administrative appeal from the planning commission. You can simply send an email to the planning department if you want to appeal the matter. And you're not held to any type of time limitation in terms of when you're gonna get your documents and to support your, your appeal. The planning department is very flexible in that regard. But with that being said, that's the history of the motion and ultimately, decision of the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Michelle. So, that brings us back to, as Michelle said, it was a tie to tie vote on Page 5 and 6. And that had to do with making the commission the final vote on this. So, I would look, I don't exactly remember the motion before because we were discussing it and we changed to 30 and the recommendations is to 15. My member, Michelle, this is to keep it as written, but it was your recommendations to 15 days instead of 30?
Planning's recommendation.
Staff and legal discussed the proposed motion and we would suggest 15, again, because the appeal process is different than appeal to circuit court. You don't have to file bond or notice of hearing to opposing parties, et cetera. But again, that's completely within the discretion of the Board.
Okay. So, with that, I would open up discussion from the Board.
Chairman?
Ms. Haddock?
Okay. I have, based on listening to the referendum part back and forth, on each party, I still believe that the planning commission should be a recommending body to this commission. So, that being said, if you look at Page 2, public hearing, all the way down to where it says, "Planning commission shall grant the application with conditions," everything above that, "Prior to the, prior to the hearing, the planning commission shall grant the application with conditions and safeguards as appropriate. Continue the application to obtain further information or deny the application if consistent with purpose of 320." I would like to strike the language below it in the appeal process and put it that the planning commission is a recommending body to the Board of Commissioners. That way, this goes to either the consent or the regular agenda like a lot of our items already do. That would alleviate the appeal of the planning commission decision and it would also bring this right straight to the Board of Commissioners, either on a consent or regular agenda. That'd be my motion.
I would second that motion.
There's been a motion and a second and can we...
Can you say that for me one more time, Deb?
Okay, so, on Number 2, the public hearing, you would take it all the way down to 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. There's up to Number, Sentence 10, all the way up to 320 where the period is. Take out the decision of the planning commission shall be final. What you'll put in there is it's, it's a recommendation from the planning commission if they denied or recommended or need more information. And then, after that, they won't be the final body. It will go to us, the Board of Commissioners, either on a consent or a regular agenda item. An appeal process, you won't need it anymore because it's already coming to us anyway.
Okay. With the motion maker and second here, if I recall right, when we were discussing this, as part of the compromise on the first motion, they were asking to change affected and agreed. So, now, do we need to go to Page 6 to the top and make any additional, go back to the original?
No, sir. You would, you would strike, strike Section F because there would be no appeal at that point because it's already coming to us. And it would go from there to, either to court or they agree or disagree with this Board of Commission.
Right. So, I'd ask State's Attorney's Office, that'd be striking all F then? We wouldn't have none of that? Ms. Michelle Hoffman, please. Some clarification.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. Yes, if you make the changes to Paragraph E2 as suggested by Commissioner Haddock, you may eliminate the Paragraph F regarding appeal process.
Okay.
And we could play with the language a little bit, but I'm understanding Commissioner Haddock essentially wants this to be the decision, the planning commission shall be a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, period. And then, perhaps we could add something, something in effect that the application will then be considered by the Board of Commissioners on either the consent agenda or regular, as a regular agenda item, something to that effect.
Chairman?
Okay, Ms. Haddock?
It would automatically go there, so I don't know if you'd have to put it there. We do it all the time in the planning department. The bottom line is that the planning commission is a recommendation to the, to the Board of Commissioners. And then, it automatically goes on consent or regular agenda like our other items, ma'am.
Correct, but I'm wondering if you, your motion included that language, just for clarification.
Right. But again, the consent and regular agenda, Ms. Michelle, it automatically does that. I don't think we have to put it in language, if I'm correct.
Okay, so, we have a motion on the floor and seconded to change the decision of the planning commission shall be a recommendation to the Board of Commission. And that would, that's on Page 5, which would strike Paragraph, or Section F. And there was a motion and a second for that. Any discussion from Ron?
Mr. Chairman, I totally agree with, with that. In fact, if you want to look at my scribblings here, it's exactly what I had. I just have one question, though, that when I listened to the tape the other day, about referendum. And I agreed with Commissioner Farabee that the only time you get a referendum is if you're doing a legislative action, which obviously this is. And legislative action is one that affects people and makes them do or not do something. And the rest of the decisions are administrative. One of the attorneys said, well, if you put this in the hands of the county commission to make these changes, everything is ref, is referable. And I don't believe that at all. We make a lot of decisions that are yes or no, like on employee wages, stuff like that that are administrative, and they're not referable. And I want to make sure that if, or at least ask Michelle if she believes that same thing, that once we pass this, it probably is referable as a legislative action. But once we've passed it and the decision on these applications comes straight to us, that is not referable because that's an administrative action. Is that correct, Michelle?
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. I agree with your conclusions, but to back up a little bit, I believe Commissioner Farabee took the position that because the action was quasi judicial, it would not be referable. That, that issue actually was specifically referenced in the Supreme Court case of Enray Conditional Use Permit Number 13-08, where the Supreme Court specifically stated that the implication of Kirschman in our decision in the present case is that a conditional use could conceivably be simultaneously quasi judicial for purposes of determining its constitutionality and quasi legislative for purposes of being subject to referendum. Now, with regard to Commissioner Buschrude's question, whether it's subject to referendum is going to come down to whether it's considered administrative or legislative. As I mentioned at the last hearing, the practical course of this issue will be if a concerned citizen disagrees with the planning commission's decision, they will seek a referendum. At that time, the auditor's office will contact the State's Attorney's Office, inquire whether we believe it's referable. I agree with Commissioner Buschrude. Because of the detailed nature of the ordinance, the objective criteria, the detailed plan, I do believe it's administrative in nature and would not be referable. But ultimately, that could end up being litigation down the road, but that would be our position. Does that answer your question?
It does, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Any more, any more follow up, Ron?
Oh, just have, I have one more question, though. And I never did figure out if that got decided or debated on Page 5 about the applicant shall notify anyone within 500 feet. Is that still in, in there? My thought was I would like to see that extended to half a mile, something like that. 500 feet isn't very much for a big mine.
No, if I recall, we didn't make no changes to the 500 feet.
Correct. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so, further discussion with the motion that's on the floor, Mr. DeSanto?
Mr. Chair, I just also understand, I read several decisions and I unders, and spoke to some legislative people. And I also believe that the, the drafting of the ordinance would be legislative. The application of the ordinance, once the ordinance is enforced, the application is the application of the law, which is judicial, or... No, thank you.
Chairman?
Mrs. Haddock?
On 500 feet, why a half mile or, or do you, Mr. Buschrude, why, why is it a half mile?
Well, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have thrown that in because that's really not anything about this particular motion. So, maybe I should wait and discuss that some other time.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Mike, Mr. Farabee, would you like to chime in?
Thank you. Any reason we can't merely adopt the language that Ms. Parker provided us in the packet for Echo 2?
Chairman?
Hi, Mrs. Haddock?
The language in there, George, it depends if you're going with affected, affected and 10 days in the appeal or if you are going with the new change up to Sentence 10 in the public hearing, Paragraph, which would end at 320 with a period instead of decision of the planning commission shall be final. That would be taken out. The appeal would be taken out and it'd be a recommendation of the planning commission to the Board of Commissioners. So, all that would be the language and that would be the change. That's why you wouldn't keep the old language.
Let, let me try this. George, you got your packet in front of you? Page 5.
Yep.
Section 2, under Public Hearings. Go down further, read down and it's about a paragraph, two sentences up where it just ends 320-F dot. Or, that's what mine says, 320.
Right.
Okay, what, what she decided with the motion on the floor is to change what's after that to the decision of the planning commission shall be a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners and then the rest of that is struck. And then, if you go to your Page 6 at the top, F, that would eliminate all the changes we made the other night for that. So, F would, the whole Paragraph F would be struck. So, I just wanted to clarify.
I understand.
F is on Page 6.
I understand.
Okay.
Right, and...
So, that it becomes, go ahead.
Disagree.
If Mr. Hickey or Ms. Parker are in the audience, ask them if they're okay with, with the new version of Echo 2.
That's a fair, is there?
They are here.
Ms. Hickey, Mr. Hickey?
Yeah, no objection. I think the language...
Okay.
Right.
George, they just said they have no objections. So...
Okay, fine, fine.
Okay. I would just, on my part...
If they're okay with it, I am.
Okay. Thank you. We're gonna move on. My part on it is I, I'm gonna compromise on this because after talking to some of my fellow commissioners, I think on this, this ordinance alone, I think we need, once we get it passed, we are gonna work on it and we can bring it back and do some work. So, I, I'm willing to see how this works out because I do have, we've had a lot of public comment on smaller operations and bigger operations and how these, we need to do some work on those. But I, I just want to recognize our planning commission board, you know, I believe they could fairly and object, objectively discuss these things. And they do have the techni, technical people on the board that, that review this. So, this is no way, shape, or form to, to take any authority away from them, I think. But I'm willing to try this out.
Chairman?
Mrs. Haddock?
The bottom line is, is the committee was a recommending body. This is not final until it's done, till the working document has a first and second reading. So, I keep hearing from constituents and mining companies and even the newspaper, even though, the bottom line is it's a working document, it's not a final. So, there's lots of public input that can be put in this. The committee just did a working document so we can start with something. And I appreciate everybody that was on the committee and the public that was in there for a year and a, year and about a month. So, bottom line is there was a lot of public comment and there was people from the public in on these meetings. So, everybody knows, because you don't have, see, public or two people, which was a rancher and resident of Pennington County, there were still six to 10 other people, on average, at a time, commenting different Audubon Society, different people that were coming in on this ordinance and helping us decide what we were gonna do for the bottom line. So, again, this is a work in progress. It's never final until this board does a first and second reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms... So, the motion on the floor is to approve. It's been seconded with the changes as noted. Any further discussion from the Board? Seeing none. All in favor of approving that? Those changes on 5 and 6 indicate by saying aye in a roll call vote.
Buschrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
And LaCroy?
Aye. Next, that comes to Page 7.
I think Item 5, Chairman. Page 5 for 500 feet, Mr. Buschrude had?
No, we had, that was for 5 and 6.
The applicant shall notify all property owners, including recorded from contract deed.
Let me ask Ron. Ron, you were gonna hold off on that 500 feet till Friday, the special meeting?
I sure could, since I just brought it up. It's something, I hope you all think about it a little bit. But yeah, I can wait till Friday.
Okay, so, we'll wait for Friday on that.
Chairman, and, and Page 6, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
The bottom of the line, all comments received from federal, any federal, which is NEPA, we added, and then state would be Chapter 45-6 and/or tribal agencies. So, people knew where to go. If they were looking for a change, we have to vote on that, sir.
Okay, so, that was part of, oh, you needed to add that, okay. So, the motion on, was the second here okay with that? At the bottom of Page 6 with the original motion to rewrite 2, Item 2 under E and eliminate F, but also to add federal, NAPA, state, S D L, Chapter 45, 6, under G2B.
Yes.
Michelle Hoffman?
Oh, I have another issue.
Another issue? Okay. So... So.
Yes, sir.
Looks like the board's okay with that. Do we, and this on the same page, Michelle?
I just have something to mention on page five, that is.
Just to mention, so go ahead and vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. So, approve pages five and six with those changes, all in favor indicate by saying aye, roll call vote.
Buschrood?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Fairby?
Yes.
Hickok?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
I'll recognize Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. If you look at page five, paragraph three, you will note that the language referenced is only the Planning Commission. Staff and legal will work through this document before our next meeting and make sure any references to Planning Commission or the Board of Commission is changed according to the board's earlier motion with regard to the board being the final determining body.
Thank you, Michelle, for catching that right away, and we'll look forward to that. I'm sure there'll be some other changes we'll have to go through.
Some other references.
Yeah. So next, we come to, that was five and six, page seven. On page seven, do we have any commissioners who see any changes they need to, or discussion we need to have on page seven? That would be the other half of G, two, C, and D.
I move to approve page seven, as written.
May, motion's been made to approve page seven as written. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Buschrood?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye, roll call vote.
Buschrood?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Fairby?
Yes.
Hickok?
Aye.
And LaCroy?
Aye. Next, we come to page eight, and that deals with the other half of D from G, so we got that part, three drainage erosion controls. Does anybody have any discussion on page eight? Look for a motion on page eight?
Move to approve.
It's been moved to approve page eight.
Second.
Seconded by Buschrood. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye, roll call.
Buschrood?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Fairby?
Yes.
Hickok?
Aye.
And LaCroy?
Aye. Next, that brings us to page nine of 22, and it deals with just a little bit part of the drainage erosion controls with section five additional information. It has item H, general requirements for mining operation, and some of that was moved to section I, that deals with hours of operation and dust control. Does, do we have any discussion on page nine? Any changes at this time? I'll recognize Michelle Hoffman.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office, I would just like to point out the proposed movement of the sub-paragraph one regarding setbacks as well as other paragraphs located under section H concerning mining operations, general requirements for mining operations, are part and parcel of proposal with regard to legal non-conforming uses. So, much of the movement in these paragraphs really centers on that issue.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Any further discussion? Look for a motion on the floor?
Move to approve.
Move for approval, page nine of 22. Seconded by Buschrood, so any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, page nine of 22, indicate by saying aye, roll call vote.
Buschrood?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Fairby?
Yes.
Hickok?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye. Next, we come to page 10, I'd like to do 10 and 11 together. Do you, any of the commissioners see anything on pages 10 and 11 they'd like to see changed? Give you a minute to look at it. This has to do with noise control, lighting, vibration, blasting, control of adverse effects, flying rock, air blast, that type of stuff. Hearing no discussion, I'd look for a motion on pages 10 and 22, or 10, 11 of 22?
Move approval.
It's been moved for approval by Buschrood. Seconded by Hickok to approve as written pages 10 and 11 of the 22-page document. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye in the roll call vote.
Buschrood?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Fairby?
Yes.
Hickok?
Aye.
And LaCroy?
Aye. Next, we come to page 12, let's take that one singly, that's a continuation part of maximum allowable peak velocity, ground vibrations, part of that, and then there's some stuff that was striked and moved, moved to section I, the groundwater monitoring was moved to section I. So, that's just moved, any discussion on page 12? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion to approve page 12.
So moved.
Then moved by DeSanto.
Second.
Seconded by Buschrood. Any further discussion on the board? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye, roll call vote.
Buschrood?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Fairby?
Yes.
Hickok?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye. Next, that brings us to page 13, which has to do with spill prevention and dumping prohibited. We have some changes on there, as you can see, with the limits of operations, those were rewritten and moved to and relabeled as section M.
Chairman.
Miss Hickok.
So, notice the numbers on the side had changed too, when you're, when you're reading, so people can keep track that, you know, number six is spill prevention, number seven's dumping prohibited, and number eight now is screening and berms, and you are correct, sir. Number nine has been rewritten and went to section M, sir, so you are correct. So people are following along with the numbers as well, sir.
Do we have a motion? Any further discussion? Need a motion to approve page 13 as written with HM 12 moved and relabeled as section M.
So moved.
It's been moved by DeSanto.
Second.
Seconded by Buschrood. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye, roll call vote.
Buschrood?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Fairby?
Yes.
Hickok?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye. Next, that brings us to page 14 of 22, it's the last parts of the screening and berms, and looks like we got a whole section that was struck. That was struck and moved. Well, maybe, maybe we should do 14 and 15 together. So George and Ron, we're gonna do pages 14 and 15 together, because there's a lot of stuff that was striked, and they're gonna go with both on the same page. If you could look at those, please. Could we have, Brittany, could we have a little background where these were struck and moved to, please? You probably do it a lot faster now, you can.
Sure. Brittany Molitor, the reason that it was struck and moved is it has a lot to do with the section M and the changes to the limits of operation, because how that is written, mines that were in existence, these are for new applications, so that's why it was moved to a different section under additional requirements, and then they have their own sections.
Okay, thank you, Brittany.
You're welcome.
So I'm looking for a motion on pages 14 and 15. On 15, the E was moved to section I, the lower part of that was moved to section J, so it was just a moving around to some of the words and where they were at, and locations.
Chairman.
Mrs. Hickok.
Better explanation is duration of renewal, mining permits on section 12 is now in section J on page 14, and then it goes to page 15 to the top. And 13 of transfer permit, was that struck, Brittany, or?
Section J.
Okay, so that was moved to section J on the transfer, so we will be going through this again, commission, so you know that it wasn't just bypassed. Then permit, limit, enlargement, moved to section J as well, commission and audience, and then in section K is failure to commence mining operation, and then abandonment of mining operation is in section L, commission. So most of these, except for the top of page 14, have been moved.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification, Deb. Looking for a motion to approve with the chain, or with the clarifications, page 14 and 15.
Move to approve with changes.
Moved by DeSanto.
Second.
Seconded by Hickok. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye, roll call vote.
Buschrood?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Fairby?
Yes.
Hickok?
Here, aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
I want to apologize to the public, you see me staring off to the sky because we've got somebody on landline, and so I keep looking up, hoping somebody's gonna talk to me, so. If you see that, that's what I'm doing. Page 16, next we come to page 16, let's do that one individually, there was some striking on it, and some formatting redone, looks like mostly formatting. This has to do with additional requirements of mining operations, and as to setbacks that was, Ms. Hickok had just talked about, and Michelle, were they, were they removed? So we have those all added in there. I think, well, now that we're looking at it, this is where a lot of that stuff was moved to, was I and J, so George and Ron, take a look at pages 16 and 17, those were a lot of the moves that we'd done on the previous page, and if you have any concerns with pages 16 or 17, please let me know. Otherwise, I'll give a minute for the board to kind of look at those a little bit. With that, I would.
Mr. Chair, are we asking the?
Go ahead, Mr. Fairby.
Are we asking for, for any, since we've moved these things around and probably made some changes, have we, are we asking the public for their input, or is the public out of this?
Well, what we're going to do, these have already been moved, once we get through this working document, we are gonna wait and see if there's a motion, then we're gonna take public comment from everybody. And then when we come back to our special meeting, we can review that, those comments, and we can do some more work on Friday at four o'clock.
Yeah, well, the reason I am asking is I ought to suggest that sub-I, a paragraph I, we vote on that separately, and then J renewals separately, and J, I'd like to ask the, I'd like to ask the public for their input on J, especially Mr. Hickey and Ms. Parker.
Okay, Mr. Fairby, that's, that's fair. We can take up section I, which is on page 16, so.
Correct.
If you don't, you have any questions on, Ron, are you okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so let's take up page 16, section I, setbacks, groundwater monitoring. Does the commission have any concerns with page 16?
No.
Seeing none, I'd look for a motion to approve page nine, or 16.
So moved.
It's been moved by DeSanto.
Second.
Seconded by Hickok. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye, roll call vote.
Buschrood?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Fairby?
Yes.
Hickok?
Aye.
And LaCroy?
Aye. So that brings us to page 17, as Mr. Fairby had stated, he'd like to talk about item J separately on page 17, and this has to do with renewals, transfers, and enlargements. Mr. Fairby? I'll recognize Mr. Fairby.
I'd like to, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask Mr. Hickey, Ms. Parker, and anyone else in the audience if they're okay with, with sub-paragraph J.
Mr. Hickey?
Mike Hickey, thank you for allowing me to speak. We do have some concerns with section J. First of all, we, we suggest that we use the same procedure that we did for the renewal, for the application for a renewal, that is, that the Planning Commission makes a recommendation, which then goes to the board for approval. And then secondly, down on, in number E, the way it reads right now is the planning director may approve for the renewal unless a hearing is requested by someone who resides, owns a property, or whose principal place of business is located within 500 feet, there's no provision for notice. How is anybody gonna know that an application, a renewal application is even pending before the Planning Commission? So I think you need to address that as well, in terms of giving notice again to people so that they can object if they have a concern about a particular operation. Those are our observations concerning that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Do we have any follow-up from State's Attorney's Office? Any?
Chairman.
No, Mrs. Hickok.
Danielle, do you have anything on this section that you would like to discuss, and why this board as a recommending body put what we had put in section J, 1, A, B, C, D, and E?
Mr. Danielle.
Danielle Leibers with Pete Linen's Sons, resident of Owanka, South Dakota, here in Pennington County. Just basically, on the renewal, transfer, enlargement, even on appeals, everything else, we had relied completely on staff from the committee point of view to go back to the original ordinance, or sections within the ordinance, to find out what those dates were, what those standards were, how that was handled consistently throughout the other sections within the ordinance, and that's what we asked them to focus on, to make sure there was consistency throughout the ordinance, as far as the notices that were given, the way the hearings were handled, the way everything was conducted. So, my understanding is. is that the way it's represented here now is similar to how it's handled through the other similar sections within the ordinance that Pennington County has, and we just asked that we be treated fairly from the mining industry point of view, as far as how those were administered.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Danielle.
Chairman.
Mrs. Hadcock.
Oh, Danielle, another question. So if we needed to renew a permit, do we need to put a sign up, or how would people know on if you were gonna renew and keep mining in the same area for five years?
As it stands now, if there's nothing going on with the mine itself, if there's been no complaints, if you're not having any feedback from the public, I'm not really sure why it couldn't be an administrative process through the Planning Director to renew that. Anytime that there's a complaint, it can go to a full hearing. The Commissioners hear it. They've got mechanisms to handle it that way, to make sure that it can be heard by the community, and everyone can voice their issues. If we're just waiting every five years for people to come up with the reason why they hate mining, so that they can have a hearing and discuss it, I'm not sure that's really beneficial to the county, to the Commission, or to the mining industry.
So I have a question. So what if I just think it's cut and dry? You've been mining this for a while, or you've been in the mining operation for a while, but I just think, I think most people that I've heard from the public on anything, not just mining, is we just thought it was a done deal. So the bottom line is, it's not always a done deal. It's gonna be renewed in five years. So if we needed to do something so the people knew, because it's not a done deal, that's kind of the question I'm asking you. Can we put the sign up? Should we follow the same process, so the public knows? Like you said, if there's no complaints or anything, it's not gonna matter anyway, but if there's someone that thinks it's a done deal, and you're already got your permit, and you're good to go, what should be done?
I think if the Commissioners decide there is a purpose and a reason for the hearing, because there's been some sort of formal complaint lodged, then putting the sign out in front to let people know that there's a hearing isn't an issue. I just don't know that that needs to happen as a course of events every five years, just because, or if that needs to actually have a driving event that makes that necessary.
I'm gonna guess it's an event, if it comes up in a year and a half, or two years before five years even, that you should, you know, if there's gonna be a hearing, there should be some notice.
From my point of view, I guess, I don't know if it's industry point of view. I can't speak for everybody. I would say that it should be addressed immediately. If there's an issue, I don't wanna have someone stewing about it for several years, waiting for it to become a bigger issue. We wanna know about it right now, so we can fix it. And whether a hearing's even necessary for that or not, I don't know. It depends on what that issue may or may not be. So we need to, we need to be communicating better, and not necessarily jumping to litigation or hearings every time something needs to be discussed.
And I appreciate, sorry, follow-up, Commissioner, Chairman. So, bottom line, some companies, and you already know in any kind of business, are really good at fixing problems, and some are not. So that would be my question, is communication is good, but what if a company isn't a good communicator? That's my bottom line. We're doing this ordinance for people all in general, so if your company is one of those companies that does that, that's amazing, and that's awesome. But what about the company that's not?
And I would rely back on your staff for whatever mechanism they use to currently handle any complaints. I'm assuming you've got the nuisance ordinance and other ways to handle that, to take it directly to you, whether it's a mining issue or any other issue, and I would ask you to at least use that mechanism, rather than singling the mining ordinance out, or the section out, compared to all the other sections within the planning ordinance.
But I think-
Chairman.
But I think also that mining permits are every five years. Do we have any other areas that we renew every five years, instead of, like, conditional use permits are a year? This is five years out. So that, we're not really singling out mining, I don't believe, in the sense we're giving you five years instead of a year or two, which I think is fair, but there's gotta be a mechanism in between, just like any other thing that we do with conditional use permit, because basically, if you look at this ordinance, it's basically a conditional use permit for mining. So this is a whole new bogging for us, meaning if we did conditional use permits, like we would any other, it'd be every year. And I think that's above and beyond that we need to go, but there needs to be some kind of mechanism also to, so that people have somewhat. And if you're putting your sign up, here's the bottom line. If there's an issue and you get it resolved, there's not gonna be a sign going up. But if there's an issue and it's coming to the Planning Commission for a hearing, then I believe there should be a sign up. Make sense?
I think that makes complete sense, as long as your staff has the ability to make that issue be resolved. So if it's going to a hearing, no matter what, if every complaint goes automatically to a hearing without any way for it to be resolved before that, then I'd take issue with that. If it can actually be handled by staff, and they can come to some sort of agreement between the complaint and the industry, then that's the same with any industry, whether it be mining or anything else, that would be the best way to deal with it, and to handle it, and to resolve it.
Thanks, Danielle.
Hold on.
I just got a clarification for you, because you're kind of losing me. Are you talking at the five-year part, having something noticed, or if there's a complaint?
If there's a renewal, when you get a renewal, it'd be every five years.
Exactly.
But if there's a complaint, a lot of times, what happens is, is we use a resolve that I know, because I've helped resolve some of those issues, between finding a solution between that complaint and going to a hearing. So that's used a resolve. I'm saying if there is a complaint, and it's gonna come to a hearing, and it's gonna go to the Planning Commission, based in that renewal area between one and five years, then it should be some kind of sign or something put up.
Is that how it currently is handled with anyone else that's going to a hearing?
I think, because you have a conditional use permit, what other hearings do we have besides conditional use permits, if we have complaints?
We relied on PJ for most of all this portion of it, because we just really had the technical strategies.
Yes, ma'am.
PJ, kind of a Director of Planning Department, if you were to institute a sign on renewal, this would be the only permit in our department that requires that.
So, Chairman, if I could, how many permits do you have that you redo every five years?
That's tough to say. People have to earn the five-year status. A lot of our conditional use permits are, not a lot, but I mean, we have hundreds, hundreds of them.
I guess that's what I'm saying, is after five years, five years is not the norm. It's what you work into, and we're doing five years. That's why we have treated you different in one sense, and the other, again, I see the point of, in case there is a hearing or something, that that should be some type of notice to the public.
And also to point out on J one B, the last sentence, it's also requiring the Planning Department to do annual inspections of the sites.
Thank you. Ms. Hadcock, any further before I go to the other members of the Board?
Chairman, I don't know how we would do that, but I think because it's five years, we need to add some verbiage in there, complaint-based, meaning if it can't be resolved. And the other thing is, the Planning Commission may approve the renewal of the permit, should be the same recommending body, and go into consent or regular agenda again.
So-
To be consistent.
Would it be fair to say this could be worked out between you and some of the staff before Friday's second reading?
Well, um-
Would you like to do something now?
Well, if the Board would be okay with that, we could work with the staff, not just me, but the Commissioners and stuff, if they wanted this change, we would go back and forth and see what their recommendation was.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
In the spirit of transparency and fairness to the public, I have no problem with that whatsoever. It's my opinion, anyway.
To add an-
Correct.
Verbiage that has, puts signage up-
If it's gonna go to hearing-
Upon renewal?
Correct. If it's, no, not upon renewal. If it's coming up on renewal, and there's a complaint, and the complaint can't get resolved before it goes to hearing, that it, a sign is placed, that this is, that this particular permit is going to hearing, so that the public knows that they can show up and comment.
Okay, so from what I understand, is what the Commissioners are talking about, is first, they tried to work out the problem, but it becomes a problem that can't be resolved between the parties, and then a notice needs to be presented to the, on the, placed on the property of a public hearing to deal with the permit.
Correct.
Which would draw, PJ, please help me out here, because I'm trying to, I understand where they're coming from, but I think it's-
I think basically, if the Planning Director is not able to do it administratively, a hearing's gonna happen, period. And that sign would have to go up.
Correct.
Sum it up.
So then, Chairman, then you'd go through the process of a public hearing, and how you do a public hearing is, you start with newspaper and stuff again. So you do the same public hearing you did the first time.
So how would that change this wording in here? Let me get some feedback more from PJ.
So are we talking more than just a sign now? Are you also talking letters?
Well, I think it needs to be consistent. And how we be consistent in that, I can't say it right up and, you know, tell you how to say it now, but again, consistency for renewals, in a certain extent, again, if five years is good, and we have no complaints, they're good to go. If not, then they have, they need to go through the process if that complaint cannot be taken care of with the consistency of how we started the renewal, or started the permits in the first place.
If you'd like, if you want to meet afterwards, I think we would match what's on page four, bottom of four, and top of page five, which is the initial application of notice of hearings, if that's the way you want to go.
How about this? How about, I think we've got a good understanding of where the Commissioners are coming from on this. How about we approve it as is today, because of Friday? You have on your notes for the review, what they're gonna, and you can contact them to bring back the changes. Then with those changes written in, we could review that page again and go from there.
Wow.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
This is, and I believe, pardon me, this is kind of two-part. So one part is, if things can't be worked out between the mine and the individual complainant, and it's going to hearing, we're going to notice. But also, the second part is, is that I believe what Commissioner Hadcock is asking for, is that we also, at that point in time, are making a final decision on, that the Commission makes a final decision on the renewal of the mining permit. Correct?
Right.
Now, I'm just saying, if we can approve the page today, and when they could, because there may be other changes in the pack, which-
Right.
I'll recognize Brittany. I think Brittany's got something.
Sorry, Brittany Molitor, I just, before you guys got ahead of yourself, if you go on the next page, on page eighteen, we did, Michelle and I went through a lot of Ms. Parker's comments, and we kind of added that section using what she had requested, and it has to do with receiving complaints, being directed by the Planning Commissioner, the Board of Commissioners, to review these and bring them in front of you.
So it's actually saying that, actually, at the bottom, it does say Planning Commission may revoke, and it says, taken by the operator, notice of hearing shall comply with requirements of three twenty.
Right, so we kind of did some of that work already, so I just wanted you guys to know that.
Thank you.
No.
So Chairman, one question. So then we'd have to change some of that verbiage based on that we are final recommendation, right, Ms. Brittany? So we changed a little bit of it, so that we are the final recommending body, even on the renewals.
Correct. That was prior to the change that was made today.
So we could add that verbiage into, with seventeen and eighteen for changes.
Correct. Because that was part of what Michelle had spoke about, where there was gonna be places in here where we're gonna have to change, because the Planning Commission was originally the final decision, now it's the Board, so some of those areas are gonna have to change.
And most of this says what we were just talking about. I'm sorry, I didn't read some of this on the final. So what we'll do is seventeen and eighteen, try to incorporate with what the Board is saying now, and then bring it back. So that, that could be, since we're doing this page by page, Chairman, seventeen and eighteen are work in progress, so it just, I don't know if the motion needs to go to that, or how that is set on seventeen and eighteen.
Well, that would be my suggestion, that we do seventeen and eighteen with, and the staff work on some of the discussions that you guys talked about. And then come Friday, we'll have that discussion with the changes.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
I would move to approve seventeen and eighteen, with the understanding that it is to be worked on and revised as of our second reading.
Motion's been made.
To reflect Chairman Hadcock's suggestions as to who makes final decision.
Ours.
Not Hadcock, the Board's decision.
The Board's. Okay.
Thank you.
Motion's been made to approve seventeen and eighteen with the understanding that staff's gonna come back with some more recommendations of the direction of the Board.
Second.
You normally, we're in the process of discussion. I'd ask- Somebody wants to speak, then Commissioner needs to, I'm trying to get through the working dynamics.
Let's get through this, and then let him speak at the end, if that's okay, because we can come back to those sections.
Mr. Chair.
George.
I got lost someplace in here. We were talking, I thought we were talking about paragraph J, renewals, transfers, and enlargement, and we somehow got headed down the path of complaints. And I think that's a different matter. Obviously, it's subsumed under renewals would be complaints, but complaints should stand alone day to day. And I think we got the two mixed up. Probably should have a separate complaint section.
I think, George, they recognized that, but they also realized on page eighteen, there were some other changes. That's why they're giving staff some direction to come up with some other recommendations. And Friday, when you're here, we'll, and we can get those, have those discussions on Friday when we review it a second time. Is that okay with you, George?
Well, once again, J was renewals, it's titled renewals, transfers, and enlargement. And I say it's subsumed in that, would be renewal, be how many complaints the person's had, or the outfits had, but I think we took the emphasis on complaints, and signs, and notices, and all that business, and forgot about what the section is for. It's renewals, it's a five-year point. And I certainly agree with what Mr. Hickey was saying about the Board should be the final decider on renewal, and then I also agree with him on the notice. If we're gonna talk about complaints as they occur, it shouldn't be part of this subsection.
Chairman.
Mrs. Hadcock.
Section J, George, has duration and renewal of mining permits. It also has Section F, renewal mining permits, and then they've got some other stuff they moved, is what Commissioner LaCroix is saying. It also has Section Two of Transfer Permit, which is something whole different than what we're talking about on notices. And then it has Section Three, Permit Limit Enlargement. So you have three different sections that have to do with renewals, transfers, and enlargements. So we're keeping that in mind for the changes.
And you done, Deb?
Yes, sir.
And as I said, George, they're gonna work on this and bring back some recommendations, and I would really appreciate your thoughts on it over the next couple days, too, to, when we review this on Friday. But right now, I'm kind of looking for a motion. It looked like some of it's been worded right, but it makes some changes. I'd look for a motion too.
Before we leave the, before we leave the subject, should we entertain a separate subsection for complaints as they occur?
No.
We shouldn't have to stack them up for five years. We have a separate section for complaints.
Chairman.
If there's one in there, I apologize. I'm not familiar with it.
Okay, hold on. I think Ms. Hadcock wants to respond to that. Ms. Hadcock?
George, if there's complaints, they won't be stacked up. They'll be taken accordingly by the Director, and hopefully the mining company, and the public. And if they cannot find satisfaction in that complaint, then we start the process in which we are talking about today, and redoing. And that would be consistent, like Mr. Hickey or the mining company want, is a consistency on both sides.
Mr. Chair, precisely my point, where in this, in language, the process, we're handling a complaint today, or as it occurs.
Can any, does anybody-
It's in here. I read it.
I did. Brittany?
Sure. I think in that section that we have over there, the addition that staff had recommended, that's kind of the, has the complaint basis, or as directed by the Planning Commissioner, Board of Commissioners. That's typical language that's in our conditional use permits, and some of the other permits, as conditions of approval. In most cases, they can be brought forth on a complaint basis. In most cases, they can be brought forth on a complaint basis or as directed by the planning commissioner or board of commissioners.
It's on the sidebar, George, on page 18, on the complaint basis.
The light blue.
It's all about complaints.
I did hear you say Commissioner Faraby, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So back to where we were, motion on the floor, 17 and 18, with staff to look at some reworks and rewrites and bring back Friday's second reading.
The motion's been made and seconded.
Yep, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Roll call vote.
Buschrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Faraby?
Yes.
Hadcock?
Aye.
And LaCroy?
Aye. Next, that brings us to page 19. Folks, and that's a continuation of limits of operation, A, B, and then subsections I, two, and three, and N enforcement. There is a blue highlight on there from, under item I, BI, and that is, staff, staff and state's attorney recommend changing language to excavation activities. And then with a note to see Supreme Court case, Thos versus Teton, and some deletions of defense and signage by recommendations of the state's attorney's office. Do we have any questions for the state's attorney's office on the changes? Or any discussion on that? Michelle, did you want to clarify a little bit? So this is, again, this is at page 19.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office, addressing section M, limits of operation. Subsection A states, "All mining operations shall be limited to and conducted within the permit limit as described in the mining application." So under 320, we have defined permit limit, and any applications approved under 320 or any operations under a mining application under 320 will be limited to the area as defined on that permit. However, that does not address the issue of existing operations. The Supreme Court recently decided the case of Crowell versus Pennington County. However, Crowell, in that case, failed to brief the theory of diminishing assets. As such, that issue was not addressed in that opinion, and the court simply stated that Crowell would be limited to the footprint of the current pit, because anything beyond that footprint would be expanding illegal nonconforming use. This is a very important concept wi- in regard to what we're proposing, because generally, when an ordinance is passed, people are allowed to continue past uses of their property, even if they are contrary to the, the new ordinance, but they can't expand those uses. Mining is very unique in nature, and most jurisdictions recognize diminishing assets and recognize that mining is an exception to that rule against legal nonconforming use. And the reason for that is because it's not similar to any other type of use, where perhaps you're residing in a mobile home, which is now zoned for only single-family stick-built residences. Or perhaps you are operating a particular type of business, which has now since been zoned residential, is now legal nonconforming use. Mining actually uses the minerals of the land. So the courts have generally recognized that mining operations have a vested right to continue to mine and use those resources, the dirt. So with that being said, under the Crowell decision, as it stands, if we don't adopt the language as proposed in subsection B, every existing mining operation is going to be stuck with their current footprint in terms of any pit that they're currently excavating. And with that being said, and I mentioning Crowell just because I think it's important for the board to understand that under subsection B, there would be, Crowell would be able to engage in some mining. We do believe there's a limit to that based upon the facts and circumstances of that case. But I mention it because I think it's important for this board to consider this as a policy with regard to the mining as a whole and not make any decisions based upon a single individual operation or case. But that being said, despite the Supreme Court decision in Crowell, this board may legislate and adopt the diminishing assets theory. And, and I would point out that if we don't recognize some sort of legal nonconforming use, there will likely be future litigation with regards to whether there would be, if we don't recognize diminishing assets, whether there would be some sort of taking of a vested right that a mining operation might have. And I believe, once that squarely, that issue squarely briefed and presented to Supreme Court, I think it's likely, I can't, I can't guarantee anything, I can't predict what the Supreme Court would do, but I believe that it's likely the South Dakota Supreme Court would recognize the law of diminishing assets in South Dakota. It is the majority opinion. I would note that it's not just Wyoming and California that have recognized the, the law of diminishing assets. Alaska, California, Illinois, Minnesota, New Hampshire, New Jersey, New Mexico, New York, Rhode Island, Utah, Washington, Wisconsin, and Wyoming have all recognized the law of diminishing assets. So what this language does, the reason for this language is, we want to recognize that the mining operations do have some vested interest, but we also want to put in reasonable parameters and define ourselves as to what is legal nonconforming and what we would not accept as legal nonconforming. One of the reasons excavation activities needs to be in there, and that actually comes straight from the Wyoming Supreme Court case, and there are other jurisdictions that recognize this test, is that we believe mining operations is too broad. Mining operations would most likely grandfather in future excavation 30 years from now, just because an operation currently owns a parcel property and may have the intent to sometime in the future mine that parcel. And that is not what the cases that have addressed diminishing assets have decided. It's pretty much under this three-pronged test, and what they've recognized is that there needs to be actual excavation activity occurring on that parcel at the time the ordinance was enacted. So that's the first test. The second prong is that the mining operation actually had to have an intent to excavate that entire parcel of land. There could be a situation where maybe there's a small pit in, say, the southwest corner of a parcel, and there aren't any objective factors to indicate they really intended to mine entire parcel. And then third, the third prong, of course, is a consideration of whether the continued operations would have a substantial and negative impact on the community. In addition to that three-pronged test, which I think helps us identify, and the planning department to identify what would be illegal nonconforming use, we've also added some additional conditions. It would simply be a registration with the planning department. I think that's important. That way, 20 years from now, we're not arguing in court whether this was a legal nonconforming use or not. We're going to, they will have to identify the parameters of that legal nonconforming use. And as well, we've added language that would require current, legal nonconforming operations to comply with subsection H, which is what prompted the move, movement of some of those criteria that really don't apply to legal nonconforming operations, and included language concerning a reclamation plan and bond as well.
Thank you, Michelle. So I'll reread this. Under item B, section one, with mining operations highlighted in blue, that would be?
Excavation activities.
Okay, yeah. Excavation activities, change to that. And then further down, the fencing and signage, you recommend deletion of those.
Yes.
Of this page. Okay. Any discussion from the board? Mr. DeSanto.
Thank you. Does the state of South Dakota and their mining ordinance recognize the law of diminishing asset yet? They do not, correct?
The state of South Dakota, you mean, within?
In their mining regulation.
Yeah, D E N R? I'm not, I really don't have an answer for that question. I think D E N R generally just addresses permit requirements, that type of thing.
Okay.
But I don't, yeah, otherwise, you have your general rule of precluding expansion of legal nonconforming. I would say the mine, D E N R, too, and Brittany might be able to help me out with this. She, I think she's a little more familiar with some of the D E N R regulations.
Yes, I have spoke to D E N R regarding this. They leave it up to the individual counties or jurisdictions to determine where these activities occur based on their land use regulations.
Okay. And, Mr. Chair, in the case of, like, the example that you gave, the, if they had a five-acre piece of property and they were only digging, digging in one corner, basically what they need to do is notify us when they apply for the permit that they intend to excavate the whole piece, but do they actually have to physically show some sort of work in the rest of that piece?
No, that's the, uh, the whole idea with diminishing assets, is that you have a parcel, and they, you can't possibly excavate every square inch of that parcel at the same time. So generally, the way mining works is you have an excavation in one location, then you reclaim that area and you move on to another area on the property and begin excavation there. So the whole idea is that they intend, they would need to establish intent that they intended at all times to excavate that entire area. So I think a, a good example would be perhaps you have a parcel, and there's a single pit. But when you look to, say, mining licenses, which is included as one of the objective manifestations, their mining license with the state will likely identify the entire legal description of that parcel. Now, with that being said, that's why it's very important to have excavation activity. There are a lot of mining operations that currently own a great deal of land that is not being currently excavated. So just because they have a mining permit that defines those legal descriptions of those other parcels that are not being currently excavated does not, does not make it qualify as legal nonconforming. So that's why each prong of this test is very important.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hadcock?
Good, thank you.
Ron, did you have any questions on page 19?
I do not.
Mr. Faraby, do you have any questions on page 19?
Uh, got one question, comment, whatever, and, and it applies more than just this section. What, uh, what happens to, what, what happens with consistency with, with the municipality in Pennington County that may or may not have a mining operation going on?
He's asking about Miss Cities. I'm sorry, could you restate the question, please?
I presume part of the operations in Rapid City are in the city limits.
No jurisdiction. Do we have jurisdiction in the city, Michelle?
Jurisdiction in the city will, well, this applies to any district where there's mining.
Yeah, I, I think that would apply to everybody fairly.
And I don't think there's any, the city has any regulations with regard to mining. This should actually apply to any mining operation within Pennington County.
Okay. So I'd look for a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, I would defer to, I would defer to Commissioner Buschrude, but I don't think we have jurisdiction in the city limits.
Ron, what do you think of that?
Well, Michelle's probably capable of answering that, but my opinion is that if we pass a law, we can do that, and it applies within Rapid City if they don't have the authority to do it. If they have the authority to do it, then we, whatever ordinance we pass is not applicable to Rapid City.
Right.
Thanks, Ron. You're agreeing with that, Michelle?
Absolutely.
Okay. So motion, I'm looking for a motion on the floor, looking for a motion to approve page 19 with the changes of mining operations to excavation activities and changing the fencing and signage, deleting those. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Move to approve page 19 with those changes?
Yeah.
Seconded by Buschrude. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Roll call vote.
Buschrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Faraby?
Yes.
Hadcock?
Aye.
And LaCroy?
Aye. Next, we come to page, I want to do 20 and 21, oh, excuse me, 20 and 21 together.
22, please.
And 22? Yep, we'll do all three of those together. So commissioners, please look at your packet, 20, 21, and 22. If there's any changes you'd like to see on those. If you don't see any, there's one with some striking on page 21. Section 507, construction permits. It looks like it was added with the exception of bonding and surety requirements, and those are due to state requirements, if I am correct, that we have to follow. Those look like the only changes that were. And those are S D C L 45 dash 6B dash 4 on page 21. If you see no changes, I'd look for a motion to approve pages 20, 21, 22.
That's my motion.
Motion was made by Buschrude. Is there a second for discussion?
I'll second for discussion.
Second for discussion by DeSanto. I'll recognize PJ for discussion.
Mr. PJ, kind of a director of planning department. Uh, section 511, under fees D, if the board is looking to have the notice of hearing process occur again for renewals, we may have to look at making those fees a little higher to cover the costs.
I agree. So if the changes from the previous pages and notices, that may come back as a change also.
Correct.
All right. Thanks, PJ. So so far on the floor, the motion is to approve 20, 21, and 22 with the changes, with the added of the exception of the bonding and surety requirements per South Dakota Code of Law 45 dash 6B dash 4. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, I'd look, let's do a roll call vote to approve those three pages and indicate by saying aye.
Buschrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Faraby?
Yes.
Hadcock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye. Thank you, folks, for letting the commissioners get through their, their work. I think at this point in time, we'd like to take.
Break.
Five-minute, 10-minute?
Five.
Actually.
Yeah.
Let's do.
Motion? Five-minute, please.
Motion, there's motion, take a five-minute break and come back.
Seconded.
Seconded by DeSanto. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Discussion.
Excuse me, George?
I do have discussion. This, this last section, since the last break was very, very, very good. I could hear everybody, so let's, let's keep it going for the next, next session.
Hang in there. All right, take a break.
Thank you.
Roll call vote.
Buschrude?
Aye.
DeSanto? DeSanto?
Aye.
Farabee? Hattcock?
Aye.
McRae?
Aye. We're back in session. To first start out, I want to make some clarifications for today's meeting. Today is for first reading. If first reading passes, we do have a special meeting scheduled for the twenty-third. That is to take some more public comment or do some rework as we went through this today. So the, the, the meeting on Friday would be to approve this and make any more changes, and then we're looking at scheduling another meeting that needs to be approved later on on the agenda for, what's that, twenty-seventh, February twenty-seventh, and that would be the final second meeting of the ordinance. So with that in mind, just a little, I'll clarify again one more time. Today would be first reading, the twentieth, Friday at four o'clock, the twenty-third is a special meeting or a work session meeting to, to give the staff chances to make some of the changes or some of the commissioners to, to make some changes between now and Friday, and Friday would be possible second reading or work session, and second reading would be the, the twenty-seventh for second reading. With that, we've discussed, and we're going to take public comment at this point in time. What we'd like to do is limit it to three minutes. You know, at this point in time, we, the board has taken several hours of public comment, and that's why I, first, I want to thank you guys for your participation and being patient and letting us do our work today for first reading. But we're going to take public comment, and you heard some of the stuff that the commissioners have discussed. So if you want to address those, please do so, and we'll make our notes, and then when we come back to our special session on, on Friday, the commissioner has those to work with, and we can go by those. So with everybody's agreement, there is no good way to do this, except for signing up, but I think, I think we've got a small enough crowd that will let you walk up, and just please identify yourself for the record, and please note where you're from and so forth, and, and we'll start the three minute, we're going to keep it to three minutes. And we have a timer up here. It hasn't started yet. Was it green, yellow, red?
Correct. The timer, when you approach, will be red. All started at three minutes and it'll turn green. Your time can start. When the light flashes yellow, that means you have thirty seconds remaining, and we ask that you wrap up your comments. And when the right, right, light turns red, your time is up.
And I'll just reiterate, special meeting Friday for some more, so please don't think this is the end or we're trying to limit you. We've taken several hours of public comment, and we're willing to hear you and work on what's going on. So with that.
Thank you. My Kiki, I won't even take three minutes.
Don't start yet. Mr. DeSanto has a comment. Sorry.
I just wanted to ask people, if you do have a specific page that you're referring to, if you could have that page number for us, it would be very helpful.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Hickey?
Start, push, push the button. My Kiki, I, I just want to comment, I, I want to, first of all, thank you, guys. I think that you've made some really good changes to the ordinance, proposed ordinance, especially with respect to who has the authority to make the final decisions. With respect to section J, which is found on page, I guess, it's, is it seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, you're going to take some additional comments, I understand, and I would suggest, if, if possible, that if, if the staff has comments, that they get those to you, you know, say by two o'clock on, on Wednesday or Friday, I mean, so that maybe they could be sent out so that we could have a chance to look at those beforehand. I would, I'll get our, our comments submitted by that deadline if possible, and I'll, I'll copy those people, because I think that's, by communication, I think that's going to help a lot. I agree, Pink Lane is a great company. They're, they do it right, and I think that we need to differentiate between complaints and renewals. And I think that complaints can be handled differently than renewals, and, and so we're going to propose some language to address that, that dichotomy, if you will. But we do think that on renewals, there needs to be a better, some better language with respect to notice to people, and I, I agree with Mr. Busch that five hundred feet is probably insufficient in terms of the distance. And so with those, with those comments, I'll sit down, like I said, and I think that, I think we're making some progress, and I, I really do appreciate, and I know the people that I represent do appreciate all of the time and effort that this committee has, has spent, and so with that, I'll sit down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. I think he makes a good point. What was he saying, two o'clock by Wednesday, maybe? Mr. Hickey, could you clarify that again one more time?
I think, I think if you could give us a deadline, you know, sometime Friday.
How fast are you going to turn this around?
To have our, have our things submitted, I think that's helpful for everybody.
Okay.
Um, you know, staff definitely needs time to get everything done and formatted for today. So absolutely, as soon as staff gets their work done, we will send out the document as fast as we can. You know, you guys are meeting already on Friday. That's just a couple of days away. So we'll get it out absolutely as soon as possible.
And the public can still send their emails and drafts.
Absolutely.
To, to us, so that would be a plus. Yes, sir.
Okay. My name is Gary Malums, and I'm from the Rockerville area. And I've been attending these things for two years, and the last two meetings have been kind of confusing. I sat here and read all these changes, and I've still got one from the seventeenth that didn't correspond to anything you guys had. So I agree with Mr. Hickey that we need something that we can digest before the meeting. But my comments is primarily on my old page twelve, which is groundwater monitoring. It's got fifteen hundred feet. There's not a well within fifteen hundred feet of the crow pit that could be monitored. And I know that's my concern, is that if that permit is allowed to go through there, we're going to look just like Sturgis Road in ten years. And that's a main artery, and I mentioned that we had four hundred and forty million dollars worth of tourist dollars in the Black Hills area. I don't think we want to jeopardize that, and I'm not against gravel mining. The other question I got is, does this permit apply to federal ground? Can anybody answer that?
Brittany?
In some instances, it would depend on whatever special use permit the Forest Service issues to the requester. We do have some mining permits that are on federal grounds, but is that the request of the Forest Service that that person follow local, state, and federal guidelines, but not all of them. So it would be up to whoever agency, whatever federal agency, and their requirements and their permit.
I know, I'm the president of the Black Hills Prospecting Club, and we have quite a few claims out there in a strictly recreational-type mining. We're already governed by the, the Forest Service, the Bureau of Land Management, and the state. So we already got a lot of regulations that we face, and we have to fill, fill everything out annually, not five years from now. They inspect ours every year, and we're just, we don't disturb probably two or three acres. So I guess I look at some of these permits, we already paid at the B L M, the Forest Service, and the state, or not the state. Well, yes, we do, and we have to register those with the county every year. And so I guess I'd like to be concerned that somebody take in consideration our recreational lab. And like I say, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Good afternoon. My name is Payu Harris, commit to Capitol. I live here in Rapid City. This is just briefly touching on section J with the renewal process. I'm wondering if there's the ability to enter into, basically add some language to include affected areas and/or persons. In the event, God forbid, of a groundwater incident, that would extend the affected area way beyond five hundred feet. The citizens of Rapid City have the right to have additional securities to be able to present issues to the board. I know there's several things that Deb and I spoke about earlier in the complaint section, and that's very good. I think simply adding that language, if the state's attorney's office can do that, just provides one more additional security for the people of Rapid City, because I think we definitely deserve it. I think the other thing just also is we do need to be careful to protect the rights of, you know, recreational miners and the tourism dollars. I mean, we're talking about mining for gravel, if I understand right, among other things. Are we really going to put, you know, our tourism dollars up against gravel mining? I mean, we really need to weigh out where our future is going. I'm building an office here to set my foundations back here. We're looking at a two-hundred-billion-dollar industry, you know, and we want to invest in the tourism industry, you know, so we want to make sure that our investment is going to be safe while investing with mining and other things in the area. We just want to make sure that we have all the cards on the table and are able to look at things proactively for the future of this great state, so.
Now, could you repeat your name one more time? Is it Pike?
Payu. Payu, P A Y U.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Quentin Riggins. I'm an attorney with Gunderson Palmer Nelson in Ashmore. We represent G C C in this matter. I know that previously, Mr. Smiley had provided the commission with statutes which specifically revolved around the purchase of the cement plant by G C C from the state of South Dakota. It is our position that these statutes do supersede local ordinances as they were necessary in order to effectuate that purpose. Were it not for these statutes, there likely would have been no sale from the state of South Dakota. These statutes are very important to the purchase of the cement plant, which is why we've requested the specific addition of language stating pursuant to S D C L eleven two sixty-six and S D C L eleven four thirty, the following properties shall be exempt from the permit requirements of this section. All real property owned, leased, or otherwise held by the state of South Dakota by and through the South Dakota State Cement Plant Commission as of December twenty-eighth of two thousand. This was what was referenced in Mr. Smiley's letter of February first.
Thank you. Anybody else? This is public comment. Somebody remind you.
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Nancy Hilding, Prairie Osinbonne. I'm sorry I was late. My battery wouldn't work, so I missed the first part. So I may be dumb about some things. I'm going to get to what I'm very concerned about. It's, I'm going from an older version where you took the two paragraphs about mining, hard rock mining, and there at the end. You're going to, you, you've done it to conditional use, so you need the planning staff and the lawyers to look at how the process that you have now conflicts with the process for, for conditional use under your conditional use section. And, you know, so which is going to, you know, supersede the other? And, and you need to see any, any, you look at your conditional, conditional use thing and see if there's, you're adopting this, the process in this ordinance, see if there's any conflict there. Normally, when you have a conditional use thing, you, you guys don't want to go into litigation and referral and all that. So, so you need a laundry list of things that you have to comply with when you're deciding on a conditional use, and look at your conditional use section and see that that's, you know, like about real estate. So you might want a laundry list of things that you're to consider when you're doing a conditional use. Once again, I refer to Lawrence County. You know, Lawrence County already has a laundry list. You might take theirs. But I think you need the laundry list, and you need to talk about how this section interacts with your existing conditional use. Okay, all right, so then with respect to the minerals thing, section five, there is statute forty-five six B dash, three or four, I think it's four. I, I've referenced this before. Deb should know what I'm talking about, but it says that if you have zoning, you can have mining. This is under the hard rock, forty-five dash six B. You can have ordinances and regulate mining, but you cannot be inconsistent with the state rules and, and you cannot, and cannot be in conflict. So, so you have eighteen or twenty-two pages of ordinance. Somebody either needs to go through and make sure there's nothing in there in conflict with the state rules or just have an escape clause, you know, severability clause. Okay, so that is just a suggestion. We didn't have to worry about this in sand and gravel because that, that thing about not being inconsistent doesn't apply to sand and gravel. It just applies to minerals, which is why we made such an effort to get the definition of minerals correct. Am I running out of time?
You will be in just a few seconds, yes.
Um, I have a, I have a lot of other ones.
Yep, time.
Time. All right, okay, I'll have to write it.
Yes, you can please email us, too, and, and send it to the commission office.
All right.
The notes for Friday meeting.
Chairman?
Ms. Hattcock?
Ms. Nancy, too, we did a lot of changes, so that way, make sure you're getting the new changes so you're ready for Friday as well, honey.
It would be a great help for me. I, I asked for this, and I couldn't get it. If we could have this thing in Microsoft Word so that we could, if we're writing changes, we could put it next to the text, because otherwise, you know, we just have to write such and such a page, line, such and such. But for us to work from Microsoft Word with track changes of our own would be very nice. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Nancy. Any further discussion? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tanya Stans. I'm a resident and citizen of Rapid City. I'm also a enrolled Obalasut tribe member. So when we were looking at the draft of these ordinances, and so we were addressed in the portion of the application process of notifying the tribes. So my question to you and to state's attorney, Michelle. Hoffman, yeah, would be, how is the state addressing the tribes? What's the process for that?
You're talking the state?
Well, I, I want to, I want an answer from the commission, and then I want an answer from the state's attorney on what's the process for notifying the tribes of these mining permits?
I would have to, this was added to, to it, so I know PJ had talked to some people outside of it, and we have to. You're right, we got to find out who the contact people are for what, which tribes in order to do that. That's something that's going to have to be identified. If I'm, am I right, PJ?
Yes.
I'll ask, yeah.
Yeah, PJ, kind of our planning department, yeah, that is correct. We met with them a few weeks ago. They had a list of a lot of the points of contact for each tribe, but that's throughout the entire state and the county. So we'd have to narrow it down to those immediately in that area, whatever that square feet is that you determine or the number of feet. So it's, it's a normal process that we do have already in our, in our office when we do requests for comments, and we route to no less than a dozen or more people with each permit that we get, so.
Tanya?
Real quickly, PJ, I just wanted to know if these were certified mail or if, if any of this was certified.
I think it might be confusing the, the notice of hearing versus a request for comment. What we do is when the permit comes in, if, should I take the time for?
Yeah, we'll get, it's.
When a permit comes in, we do what's called a request for comment. So we look at where the actual site is, and then we look in the general vicinity of, of any governmental agencies, or in this case, it's going to be tribals, or even electric companies that may have a say in that area. And then we send out a brief of what they're looking to do with copies of their actual application packet, and then.
PJ, so that would be in that affected area if it's tribal land? I think there... Tanya, are you trying to ask just in general, just like... I'm asking for clarification.
That's the list.
Yeah. So we have a list, and this is a federal list, and this is from the Black Hills National Forest. And so I'm just going to read you these tribes. And what I'm trying to get to, Commissioner LaCroix, is that we want to see what the state has been sending out to each of the tribes. And then on the county level, on the planning commission, on each process, who they're notifying.
Okay.
So we're trying to bounce this county level off with the federal level, and then the state level off with the federal level. And so I'm going to read you the list of the tribes that are notified, not just in public comment, but before this, in the application process, where they're starting the permitting process. So the tribes are Cheyenne River Sioux Tribe, Cheyenne Arapaho Tribe of Oklahoma, Crow Creek Sioux Tribe, Eastern Cheshonee Tribe, Flanger-Santi Sioux Tribe, Ka'owa Tribe, Lower Bruul Sioux Tribe, Mandan-Hedautsa Erykra Nation, Northern Arapaho Tribe, Northern Cheyenne Tribe, Obalala Kauta Nation, Rosebud Sioux Tribe, Santi Sioux Tribe, Sisseton-Wapton Sioux Tribe, Spirit Lakes Sioux Tribe, Standing Rocks Sioux Tribe, and Yankton Sioux Tribe.
Okay. Tanya, I think Ms. Hickok had a question.
Bottom line is, is there... Mining companies have to go through the federal, the state, and then us. If they're going through federal and state, they should be able to produce, and we'll have those documents already, what they went through, if I'm correct. And maybe Danielle can reiterate this. She talked about a little bit of this in our committee, and now we have a county process. So what I'm saying is there's a federal process that you could look up. There's a state process they go through as well, and then they hit us on county process. So if those two are not followed, or if they are followed, that should be in the packet, or it should be through that NEPA and that... I forgot, SHPO, TIPPO, that kind of stuff. That should all have already been followed before they go to the next step. Unless... And maybe Danielle can help me answer this question. Danielle, if you'd come up for a second. Can you tell me the process through which a mining company needs to go through for basically federal, state, or anything that has to do with tribal considerations?
Danielle Weaver, it's a Peeling and Sons. The list that... Tanya?
Yes.
The list that Tanya has is absolutely right. That's what the Forest Service uses to do all the notification for consultation on the tribes. I believe that's also the list that FAA, BOR, any of those federal organizations would use. Anytime a project involves federal money or federal land or funds of any kind, it goes through the consultation process. On the state side, when it goes out for a public notice, it goes out in the newspaper for public notice, and then we have to contact, I believe it's Game of Fish, SHPO, and the county conservation. Anyone else that gets noticed would get it through the actual public notices that go out in the newspaper, similar to the county. Any public notices that would go out would be through the newspaper. Some of those agencies also have listservs that you can sign up for, so the tribes could sign up for that. It sounds like PJ maybe runs something similar, where he keeps a separate list of contacts that he sends out for. As far as certified mail, the only thing that goes out for certified mail, I think, is the three or four notices to the state that do not include the tribes. Consultation is a fully regulated thing through Forest Service, so that's just held directly between the Forest Service and the tribes, not through the proponents of the project. So it would be through newspaper public notices, any other type of public notices that the county or the state might handle, and then through consultation if it involves federal funds.
Did you understand that, Ms. Tanya?
And so dealing with the Black Hills, it doesn't matter if it's on federal land or not. You still have to consult with the tribes. And then we have issues with saying consultation, because we would like for some information on that, whereas we're getting caught up in consultation. And a consultation is our government-to-government standing. So when we're dealing with these permits on a county level, unless you can show us that you've sent out those notices, you have no backing for that. So same with state. Unless you show us those notices, there is no evidence that you have sent those out. And reaching the tribes through newspaper isn't sufficient. That isn't a federal law. So we're backing this with federal law. This is notification to all the tribes on each process, even on the county level and the state level, that they get certified mail, aware of what's going on. So that's what we're missing.
And that's beyond me, so I don't know. I know that when we go through the process with Forest Service, BOR, BLM, that they call it consultation. I'm not sure if that's a different system than what you're going to do.
It's a notification.
Right.
So they handle all of that independently of the proponents.
She doesn't set the rules. She only follows those. So those will need to be... If you want, kind of like we did, you're going to have to change and do certified mail and ask, or read the law and see if it says notified mail when you're doing mining on federal or state land. Does that make sense?
Nancy, no. The way we're running this meeting is everybody speaks once. I'm just letting a little bit for some clarification today.
Thank you, Danielle.
Tanya, it sounds like you need some more questions asked.
No, I have everything I need here. It's your understanding, not ours. Okay? So on the county level, when these mining permits are being issued, you're not fitting in, because you're putting it off on the state, you're putting it off on the federal government to notify us. When this is a Pennington County Commission, and you have to notify us also of these permit process.
Okay. Thank you, Tanya. Is there anybody that hasn't spoken before?
I'm a resident here of Pennington County and a tribal member from Cheyenne River Sioux Tribe. I think what Tanya is concerned about, the same thing I'm concerned about, is that maybe part of the application process should be added is proof that these notifications were made at the state or the federal level. Wouldn't that be part of the packet of the application that they complied so people would know, too? Or either do your own notices also, which would be fair. Another part, saying that part of it state or private or federal, doesn't agree with our treaty, which has boundaries led by... If you read the treaties that she gave you of 1868, the boundary are way bigger than you guys want to recognize, but it's what we recognize. So what we're saying is that just because you say it's a private land, doesn't agree with us, because that's your concept of the treaty, which supersedes all the laws that have been made in South Dakota, really. So providing that consultation is mandatory for us, and this is our church. We're not talking about money, so we're very concerned about it. One thing I'd like to also recommend is maybe doing a background check on these companies that are coming in from previous disasters. And another thing I've heard is you guys don't regulate the water, but we all drink water here in Pennington County. We should be very concerned about our water. Thank you.
Anybody who hasn't spoke? So on this time, I would look for a motion from the board for first reading. I'll reiterate this. This is just first reading. We're having another special meeting on the 23rd, and we'll update the books and get as soon as possible, so everybody can get up on the actual written stuff and get them as soon as possible out and get some feedback. And we'll have a special meeting or a work session Friday at 4:00 on the 23rd. And from there, we'd have to do a second reading on the 27th, make any changes or whatever we've got to do on this Friday, and then do a second reading on the 27th. We've got plenty of time for comment, Nancy. We've got to get our work done.
Could you tell us the format of some of the committees?
It probably will be... I have to discuss it with some of the board members. In fact, we'll do it later on in this agenda. We'll bring it up and talk about it. We've got one more person who wants to speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Shontay, and I'm actually a resident here of the Black Hills Territory, and I'm a tribal enrolled member of the Rosebud Sioux Tribe. And I'm also a student in Native Environmental Science Field and Water Ecology. So the reason I am here is to make sure that not just the land is protected and the water, but we must also recognize the animals that are being affected by this, not just that's in the ground, but the ones on top, like the buffalo, that's out there by the sacred site. And I've been out there, and I do know that everything has a cause and effect. Them doing explosions, it's going to do something to our buffalo, their DNA. Just like if we were to go through some type of trauma, we're going to act out in some way. So we're not only just hurting the water and the land, we have resources that we, as indigenous people, rely on, like the buffalo. Those are our sacred items, as well as the way we live. And so I just want to make sure that everything is going the way it's supposed to, and you guys recognize us as the caretakers, because that's ultimately really what it comes down to. So the issues on the Federal Reserve Indian Water Rights, I mean, I really believe that the treaty, it says right here, in the Treaty of Executive Order, the language is crucial to the overall scope of how much water the treaty land is entitled to. So with them extracting out that water, we don't know if we're going to have rain tomorrow. You know, whenever the water gets extracted, everything chemicals that are in the water will get down below surface. And I guess depending on if we have water to get it out, clean water, fresh water, but if we have a drought, all that contamination is going to stay in the soil. And like I said before, it will eventually get into the rocks, and we have to think about that soil. You guys may think that rock and gravel is nothing but to us, the land is sacred, and that's why we're here. So back to the surface and groundwater, the interconnection of our surface and groundwater makes this a single source. So we need to really think about back to the water. I guess for the stories, the tribes must always retain the right to construct and control the treaty land. And so back to what Tanya said, we do need to be informed. And so back to the cultural side of it, we do have cultural concerns. So I have one more thing. The traditional cultural attachment the Native Americans, Indian people have towards the water must always be in discussion, because we are the caretakers of this water, and we believe that water is life, and it is alive. We have proof, and we have facts, that these beliefs and spiritual way of life of Indian people is the reason of our existence. So you cannot shut us out. You need to hear our voices when it's heard, and we're speaking. So that's all I really wanted to say. Thank you guys for your time.
Thanks, Angel.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
I have a suggestion. I want to be able to communicate with all of these tribes that are involved. Would it be possible for all of those tribes that are involved to develop a single communication point, so that we can communicate with that one single communication point? And then that tribal communication point can communicate to the rest of those tribes that are involved, so that we can all be on the same page and have communication with one another? We know that this one communication point was notified, and that communication point, being part of the tribe, notifies all other tribes involved. That seems like that that would be a better way to communicate to everybody.
I think that's a good point to sit down and work on, I think, to do some research and get some people involved. Good point. Got one more speaker? Go ahead.
I was a duty a match up, but he's sapper. That's where I stay and live. And I am actually a full-fledged treaty Indian, non-US citizen, and I reside within the treaty territory. I'm listening to Tanya Stans and Shontay Skuya, Shontay. And staying up there, observing what's going on. I don't know if you guys are aware of it, but yeah, digging and pounding, we listen to it at night. And so I thought I'd bring that to light here. 1851-1868 treaty, I'm a treaty holder, and I stand on that. And I'm also headsman, and I represent our nation. And any of the tribes that are going to follow it, you know, under this government from hereforth. And looking at the rogue and things that I've heard and seen and what we've experienced, even since Ochretetshak going to here, has to stop. You know, so treating the people well, as far as being in the hills, I came across a couple insults by the Wachichus, the Caucasians. I ignore it. Pray for them in a good way. I let it go. It's not my problem. They're the ones lost inside here. So with that, I want to go ahead and just let you guys know that we are up there. I live there. My land, it's our people's land, and that's what we're monitoring right now, that they are drilling, digging, and they are bringing in bags of stuff that actually dissolves the rock and whatever else is going on with whatever they're doing. And it is going to destroy your guys' reservoir here when they get into that water with their cyanide, uranium, digging, pulling up all those chemicals. Elk and other animals within the area are going to be affected, as well as your generations of people and children that are not here yet. So look at that damage when you're sitting here planning and all this stuff like that. It kind of just saddens me that I have to watch people just have fun with their little money needs. We have nothing. We're up in the hills. We go off of what other people give us to stay there. And it bothers me, but I pray about it. So I'm here like that way, in a good way. So impeachments or anything like that, not as a threat, but it's part of the process. You guys are planning, so that's our plan. So in state, allowing you guys to do this, and states in conflict with federal statutes, by the way, and I was told that by Deb, I think I know how I write. You can't do that.
Thank you. Could you identify yourself one more time?
Red hail.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm Dakota, so Damacota. All right. Have a good one.
Thank you. At this point in time... Seeing none, all in favor indicate by a roll call vote, please.
Buskrud?
Aye.
Santo?
Aye.
Is Farabee on? Farabee?
Yes.
Hadcock?
Aye.
La Croix?
Aye. Thank you, folks, for coming out today as I was first reading, as a reminder, we have more meetings coming up. With that, we do, we are adding our items from chairman and commission members.
No.
No, sorry.
We've scheduled a special meeting on the 27th, please, sir, and set the time.
Item number nineteen, request for a special meeting for ordinance amendment 0817-02 for February 27th to 2018. Need a motion for...
So moved.
Let's look.
What time?
February 27th, 2018, do we have a time?
That's up to the board. Do we have to do it today, or we're going to see what happens on?
I think we've got to have a time.
No, we need to set it today. Oh, so we get notice out? Mm-hmm. Okay.
What is the 27th?
I didn't know if the board wanted to do a 9:00 AM meeting, or if you wanted to do another evening meeting.
I would prefer a 9:00 AM.
Tuesday, 9:00 AM? Ron, you okay with that?
I am.
Mess, special meeting Tuesday, the 27th at 9:00 AM? George, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So the motion is to set a special meeting for February 27th at 9:00 AM.
So moved.
It's been moved by Santo, seconded by Hadcock. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Item number 20 is items from chairs or commission members. I think at this time, I really don't have anything from myself.
Neither do I.
Any other board members are good? Ron, you okay? Any items?
I have nothing at this time, thank you.
George, you okay?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to move right along. Committee reports, chair really has none, nothing to report. Any other board members?
No committee reports.
Nothing? Nothing? Ron, George, okay, moving right along. Legislative reports. Nothing. We're doing good. Nothing to report. Item number 23, approval of the vouchers, 2,600, it's been moved by Hadcock.
Seconded.
Seconded by Buskrud to approve the voucher for 2,698.92.22. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Lot of frivolous.
Go ahead, George.
Lot of frivolous spending, and so I'll be voting no, of course.
Okay, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Buskrud?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farabee?
No.
Hadcock?
Aye.
La Croix?
Aye. Thank you, guys, for all the hard work today.